And I have Paul, please.
Mayor Lacy.
Here.
Trustee Fay.
Here.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Swisher.
Here.
And Trustee Volpe.
Yep.
Thank you all very much. Will you please rise and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. I ask you please to turn off or silence your cell phones. First item is the agenda adoption. Questions for additions, deletions on the agenda? Then I would entertain a motion.
Will we accept the agenda as drafted?
Second.
Second Volpe. The discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is consent agenda. Any questions or comments on consent agenda? Go ahead.
I have some problems in the minutes. On page, question number seven, on page 10. That should be carried, not failed.
Trustee Volpe also let me.
Oh, okay.
So, thank you.
There's another one later. Did you get that one, Dave?
Seven and eight.
Right, that's it.
We got those covered. Thank you very much. Both Fay and Volpe. Any other questions or comments on consent agenda? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you very much, Devin. Second row. For the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you very much. First item here is public comment. Have Paula had notified me, we have one signed up for public comment. Boy, this is, this is new, huh, Paula? We actually have a sign up sheet. Oh, nothing on there tonight, okay.
Yeah. Mayor, we actually have two online guests wish to speak.
Phillip, I'm gonna let you, all right, identify.
Start with Leonard.
Mike, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address.
Yes, I'm Leonard Davis. I live in Buena Vista. I am chairman of the Peaks to Peaks Pickleball Club, New Courts Committee. And I just wanted to give you about a three minute update on the progress of the pickleball court project. And thank you for your support for that project. We've had a busy summer, as you can see in this first slide, if we can put it up. It's a photograph of the courts with the, showing the crowded conditions. This was taken about 10 days ago. We're having 30 to 40 people showing up most days for pickleball. We're working well with the tennis groups, but we're sharing the courts with them. So it's been a very busy summer. You will probably recall last year in 2020, we along with the town Parks and Rec and with the great help of Earl and the Parks and Rec Board, were part of the GOCO application, combined application for River Park, for complete funding for the new pickleball courts. And if we can put that slide, next slide up showing the new courts and where they will go. I don't see it there.
I'm getting there, Leonard. I'm getting there.
There it is. It's, it's just north of the tennis courts and just west of the baseball diamond. Gonna make great use of that rocky field sitting there. Very much appreciate the town allowing us to use that site. In our application last year, the total cost of these courts is about $275,000. We have raised the pickleball club toward that in little in excess of $45,000 from our members and community. So we're very pleased with that. Last year, we put that money in, offered it to the town as part of the GOCO application process. And along with trails and a new restroom facility, we submitted about a $600,000 GOCO application in 2021 for the 2021 cycle. That unfortunately was denied. Undeterred, we came back and in April of this year, presented to the council through Earl and Parks and Rec and with their blessing, a phased approach, realizing we didn't get the GOCO grant. We said, okay, what can we do? And when we broke this down into three phases, the site preparation, the concrete foundation, and then finally the court surfacing and fencing. And as you will probably recall, in April, we proposed and the town approved and the county approved. And we partnered $10,000 each to get phase one started. And Steve Miles should be moving onsite any day now to actually start moving, moving boulders and busting them up and getting the land cleared. We did have a great groundbreaking ceremony on June 15th. If you could bring that photo up. You see a lot of happy and enthusiastic pickleball players there that are really excited about the new courts. So where we are now, we've got phase one completely funded. If you go back to the phase approach slide. And we're starting fundraising on phase two. And we're very excited about that. We're doing two things. We're working with Earl and Parks and Rec as they look toward another combined application to GOCO for the 2022 cycle. And we're hopeful that we'll be a part of that and we'll be successful. And they will grant it this time and we'll get full funding with us contributing the money we've raised toward that project. However, realizing GOCOs turned us down a number of times in the past, we have proceeded with the blessing of Earl and Phil to pursue some other smaller foundations. Specifically, they are the Gates Family Foundation, the Boucher Foundation, El Palmar, Daniel's Fund, Colorado Health Foundation, and Next 50 Foundation. And we're asking each of them for about $50,000 contributions, trying to go at this smaller bites. And if we can hit on one or two of those, you know, we'll be successful. GOCO would be the home run. One of these, one or two of these others would be a solid single or double. So that's where we are. We're hoping that whether we go GOCO or we go for, with these other six smaller foundations, that we can partner again with the town and the county on some Steve money. Because all of these foundations want to know, well, how much are you putting in? Is the town putting in? Is the county putting in? So that's where we are. We're excited, hoping to get phase two funded this fall and then move into phase three next year. So be happy to answer any questions. Can't tell you how much the pickleball community appreciates the support of the town on this.
Thank you very much, Leonard. I know on social media, there's been conversation, so it's catching on.
Good. Well, we'd, we'd love to have all you trustees out there playing Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 8:00 AM.
It hurts too much. It just hurts too much.
It doesn't hurt while you're playing. It's after you play that it hurts.
After you play. For a good week now. Used to be days, now it's weeks. We had somebody else, Phillip?
Yes, you have. I think it's Becca Williams. I think you'll remember, to a panelist, please.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Becca Williams, 118 Trenton Street, here in BV. And I think I also need to make a comment on pickleball, but that wasn't my plan. No, just kidding. That was a great pitch, though. I would like to comment on the ongoing discussion about short term rentals. I have some thoughts and one idea to share. I just want to say, I really appreciate the intention and thoughtfulness that you all are putting into crafting a policy that's going to serve the community. I see the value in Airbnb. I've often stayed in them when I've traveled over the years. I don't love living next to one. My husband, Kadoz, and I have three licensed rentals on our short street alone. And there are five more within a three street area. I love seeing Glenda across the street and Jesse next door and knowing if one of our packages gets delivered accidentally to 118 River Run Drive instead of 118 Trenton, that somebody's gonna drop it off. I don't love the late night noise and potential erosion of the heart of the community. And we're recent arrivals, but we see this as our forever home. That said, I don't want this to be a not in my backyard saga. So an idea that I have to share, just in case it's not something that you all are thinking about, is super hosts and how to engage them in crafting this policy. If you're not familiar with super hosts on Airbnb, they are sometimes separate property managers who are not the owners. And they are experienced hosts who are held up as exemplary providers of services related to these rentals. For example, the rental next to us, the super hosts that manage that have 14 other listings on Airbnb just in BV alone. So they're, you know, they're earning revenue. These are jobs for the people that live here. And I would like to think that they are vested in the long term community vibe here. So I think it could be an interesting opportunity to engage them in dialogue since they are on the ground. And you might not have a lot of interaction with the out of county, out of state property owners once they put in that short term rental license application. So I just think it could be a great way to get some additional input from the folks who are on the ground. And who would understand both the needs of guests and the needs of community. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else, Phillip? I remind everyone that is listening that you can press star nine if you're listening by phone. And we will recognize you and have you speak up. Otherwise, if you are tuned in on Zoom, you can raise your hand and we will call on you.
Looks clear to me.
Looks good. Looks good. Thank you all very much. Thank you for your input. Pickleball's the thing to do, folks. Same. Same. Suzie?
Can you take that up?
Anybody can play. Gotta know your limits. First item is business proposal. Proposal to utilize the St. Rose of Lima Chapel as a Montessori school. Shining Mountain Montessori School will present a proposal to lease the chapel facility in Forest Square Park. Do you want to lead into that?
I would love to introduce this topic. And we have lots of guests in our audience to, to share on this as well. But in your packet on page, I'll do the boring stuff first and then turn it over to the more exciting group next. But page 27 of your packet, I, I tried to summarize in a memo what we've been talking about with our chapel facility, the old St. Rose of Lima Chapel in the Forest Square Park. As you know, the Chamber of Commerce moved out. I think it was towards the end of April and staff has been looking at opportunities and potential uses for that facility. And after going through some thought about managing yet another facility for, we'll call it, short term use for events and things like that, we, our staff was a little weary of that, but recognized that would be a potential revenue source. But we were approached by a group who's here with us tonight that is representing the Shining Mountains Montessori School. And they came up, approached staff with a, what I think is an excellent proposal to utilize that facility to get a new Montessori school up and going. And you'll see in your packet, they've put together a pretty good business plan and approach. I'll speak to some of those details. But in my memo, I kind of outlined some of the key things to consider as we move forward or we think about moving forward here is there are some changes that would be needed, be needed for that facility to bring it up to the requirements for operating the school. And so thankfully, with support from our, some of our members from, from our Historic Preservation Commission are here. We had a historic structure assessment done on that chapel that concluded in 2020. So we had a good reference document to look at, okay, what was recommended from that? And we, we see excellent alignment with some of the things that they're needing to do with some of the recommendations that came out of that structure assessment. One of the key components of that is, is needing to update the entry stairs and also to consider adding ADA access to that. That came out of the structure assessment. And so I kind of outlined some thoughts for you on that. And also a few changes to the inside, but no, no changes that would, I guess, change or harm the integrity of the historic nature of the inside. They're really looking at some sinks for, for children, to serve children. And then they would be using furniture and fixtures that can be moved around inside. So staff is very excited about this. We've, we've worked with our rec departments, our planning department, Public Works. And I think we're at a good stage here where they can present to you tonight. And we would love your direction. If you think this is a good idea, we can start working on what a lease agreement would contain and then start looking at what those construction changes need to, need to be. So with that, Lisa or anybody, I don't know who's, who's gonna talk or who's planning on talking, but I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for your time. Mayor Lacy, Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista, BV Town Staff and Guests. My name is Lisa Lamb and I'm speaking to you on behalf of Chaffee County families, of educators dedicated to licensed, attainable, early learning care in our community and as a founding member of Shining Mountains Montessori School. I thank you again in advance for your time and consideration surrounding yourselves with what matters. As per Shining Mountains' proposal and letters of support provided to you to lease the St. Rose of Lima Chapel beginning in January of 2022, you can surmise that a team of resilient, knowledgeable, dedicated and well intentioned citizens bring before you the following opportunities. Number one, to prove your acknowledgement of the dire need of licensed childcare in Buena Vista at preschool, toddler and infant levels. Number two, to serve as an equally accountable entity in providing safe, nurturing and peaceful learning environments designed for the developmental needs of your youngest citizens. To partner with a dedicated nonprofit organization, which we will become, and stellar, exquisite community partners such as the Town of BV, the Small Business Development Corps and the Chaffee County Community Foundation. And number four, to collaborate with set organizations to assure growing families in BV and surrounding communities that the Board of Trustees supports forward thinking solutions on pressing issues. Shining Mountains' Montessori School is honored for your consideration to provide a short term sanctuary for its foundational operation as a school and community gathering place. For children and adults alike, SMMs will serve as a refuge of understanding, respect, joy and belonging, a continuance of the heritage of the St. Rose of Lima Chapel. As a credentialed Montessori preschool educator and practitioner for 10 years, I can offer you many firsthand accounts of the transformational journey a child of two and a half until the age of six makes in a Montessori community. The same goes for other mixed age programs at the infant, toddler, elementary, middle and high school levels where learning is purposeful, exciting, individualized and where children's wonder is celebrated and not brushed aside. Within this frame of learning lies the care of self, care of others and care of our environment. I hereby promise you that the sacredness of the chapel as well as forest park will be revered in all accounts, renovations, additions, furnishings and learning celebrations. We look forward to our work together in utilizing a beautiful historical restored vacant building, the St. Rose of Lima Chapel, to offer our growing community in need of licensed childcare options, a short term facility option for Shining Mountains' Montessori School. And we have a few special guests, including our unofficial school mascot with us, as well as Sonny McFarland, who has been, who has been a BV resident for almost 20 years, at least. And in short, while I was doing my Montessori training, I taught in Salida for six and a half years. My first year teaching there during my teacher training, Sonny just so happened to be living in BV out of coincidence and she was my mentor teacher. She also is the founder of the Peace Education Curriculum for the American Montessori Society. And in short, the name Shining Mountains' Montessori School will be dedicated to her and her late husband, Jim McFarland, in honor of their work for peace and education for children of all ages. And their publishing company is named Shining Mountains' Montessori School. Their first Montessori school in Pueblo in the 1970s was named Shining Mountains' Montessori. And here's a quote from Dr. Jim McFarland, which means a lot to us as well as Sonny, "That all people, when manifesting the greater self within, are shining mountains glowing with eternal promise." And that's what we hope to accomplish with this project for our future presence citizens. And on behalf of the founding members of SMCS, Daniel Tom, Corelia Tom, Mascot Maila Tom, and the children ready to begin their journey with us, I thank you. And here's Daniel Tom to get more so to what you're probably more so interested in, which is the numbers and the facts.
Daniel Tom, 447 Chestnut, BV. Lisa's more of the hard things, I'm more of the numbers. Some of you might know me. I'm, I work at the county. I'm one of the county attorneys, so not here in my official capacity. But what we're really, our proposal is, you know, we've been working on this for a while. And I think there's a big opportunity right now. We've talked to Wendell before he retired. The, the Education Alliance, James.
Oh, Chaffee County Early Childhood Council.
Early Childhood Council. And what we're looking for, and we're like a harder rocks, a harder than rock place right now. Everyone is telling us there's funding available right now for early childhood centers to open up because the federal government knows, knows there's a need, the state knows there's a need. But our hard spot is, like everyone else, there's nowhere we can find, put a place in. So we can't access monies that are available right now to early childhood centers that are opening up or willing to provide services right now. And we saw this opportunity come up and we have to fill up and we're like, it's a long shot. We don't know. Actually talked to Dan a little bit about what we kind of need to do to get this up to code. It looks like this is one of the few properties that we've seen that doesn't cost over a million dollars and that we can kind of move in and really get the process going without huge renovations, without having to do or actually impact any of the historical aspects of the church. And what we're kind of looking at is a short term for us, maybe short term, at least a two year timeframe, so we could work with other community partners to possibly look at long term solutions for housing, not housing. Housing, fine. For education and BV. So I think that's, you know, what we're looking at. We ran the numbers. I think we can put, our, our ask is really not much. I mean, we're asking for, I believe, reasonable rent. But we'll put in almost all the improvements, sidewalks, all these things. We're gonna get either donated time, community time from that or discounted supplies. But all these, all these improvements that we're gonna do will work with the city to make, make sure they work with the town. And all our ask is that you work with us to allow us to try to get this going. Lisa didn't talk about, but we did an informal survey. Forty parents already responded. We would offer 20 spaces and we already have a waiting list based on that. So I can answer any more questions. We really brought mail. If you can't say no.
Trustees, question? Comments?
There's a need for it.
No, Neil, we, I don't think anybody can argue that part of it. I, I have to say, and it's probably COVID, I don't know. The initial presentation, I wanted to stand up and applaud. I'm just, I'm just going, really? I mean, that was pretty, pretty good. It's a nice space. It's a start and that's what you're saying. You have to start somewhere. We had, I mean, I was looking through what we're calling the agreement. The town is going to accept a certain amount of the liability when it comes to upkeep of the building, equipment, stuff like that. Am I correct, Phillip?
Yeah, so what, the, the framework that we've talked about there is they would be taking care of the, I guess, what you would call the normal operating upkeep. Light bulbs was a good example that we discussed. But yeah, normal upkeep, similar to what the chamber did for the building, keeping it in good order, clean, taking care of the landscaping and things like that. What, what we would be responsible for is looking at if there was something that happened with the heating, with the plumbing, something substantial with the key infrastructure of the building, which we have that liability anyway.
Okay.
So.
That answered my question.
Correct.
Okay.
We would not, we would not want to leave, if something were to break in the building now, we would not want to leave it in order anyway. So we would probably address it timely. It does, I will say and acknowledge that it, with, with people in there and a school operating, put an urgency to something breaking of that magnitude. But yeah, that's.
And I think, I think we touched on this, when it went vacant, it's much better to have somebody there as compared to having a building sitting there empty. Vandalism, whatever, you know, when it's empty, it's empty. So this just seems to flow, if you want to put it that way. Comments, trustees?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Cindy.
The fencing area, it, it will be fenced so children cannot make it to the highway. And how much of the park are they going to fence off? Do you know? How much space do you need?
So according to licensing, we'll need 1,500 square feet. And also according to licensing and the safety of the children and to keep the aesthetics as beautiful as possible to not have concrete barricades, we will have sufficient amount of space away from the highway. So our thinking was to use more so of the east, east end, I guess you could say, of that beautiful green space. And yeah, 1,500 square feet. And not, we're not gonna be utilizing the entire park.
Right.
Yes.
I think what you're offering is much needed in the community and I wish you a lot of success with it. My main concern is it is a historical building and in the lease agreement, I would want some kind of wording from Jeff that any of the renovations they make will not jeopardize future grants that we can get through the historical society to preserve that building. And other than that, I think it's just beautiful.
Cindy, Dave, you had some?
Cindy covered most of it, but the only other question I've got is, we've talked about like a, a two year lease with an option to renew, kind of?
Correct. That's what we're looking at. Now, I think those, the reason we're asking for that is because I think around three to four years, there may be other options. We're, we're working with Community Foundation on kind of options that they may have in the future here or permanent space.
Sounds great.
And we also have to remember that there is quite a bit of funds coming in, even small business loans, but from the federal and state level, we're gonna be working closely with June Prior and her successor, the Chaffee County Early Childhood Council, to apply for those grants as soon as we possibly can in conjunction with donated funds to the, to Chaffee County Community Foundation. And also funds that we personally want to be contributing.
Devin?
The goal is not to be there for 10 years. I mean, the goal is also to offer programming. Because that is the, the primary need in this county and rural. First, because that is the, the primary need in this county in rural Colorado. Unfortunately, I'm only certified um in credential to teach preschool and kindergarten at this point. Um, and I'm looking into, you know, doing it all, but um, with that said, that would also provide um local parents or other members of the community uh workforce train or training to become educators. So there's, there are a lot of variables there that would also help you make your decisions.
Devin, do you have any comments?
I was just gonna say, do we need to do this in two motions or one?
Hey, if you want to package it all in one, that would be great. I tried to, yeah, that's a good question. So uh, really looking for two, two points. So one, a direction to move forward and two, drafting a lease agreement. And then two, uh, staff is proposing to utilize this opportunity while the front entrance is being worked on to add an ADA ramp. That's not something they need, absolutely not. It's not a requirement for the school to operate. Uh, but it is, was one of the top things identified in the structure assessment. So we wanted to utilize this opportunity to put some funds in um to get that, to get that ramp completed. So that uh, the initial estimates was up to forty-five hundred for that ramp connection. So, so yes, uh, that would be what we're looking for.
Okay, so you can do in one?
Go for it.
I'll make a motion to have staff move forward with drafting a lease agreement with Mountain Montessori School and planning the construction on the chapel.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Uh, further discussion.
Okay, we'll have it in the agreement that it doesn't jeopardize the historical.
We, we can absolutely do that. That would be what we, when they actually turn in their building permits for the changes, that's what staff would be looking at specifically to ensure that it's not altering the integrity, historic integrity of the building.
Thank you.
But we can also include it in the agreement that further changes, especially to the inside, do not.
Okay.
Historically, we, when, when making motions that amend, that will require a budget amendment, didn't we used to have to include a dollar amount in the motion? I remember that correctly? Is that helpful at all?
That is helpful.
And so what do you, what are you implying that we put a up to amount?
Forty-five hundred dollars is requested.
That works for staff.
Could we amend that?
I guess.
You may amend your second. Thank you, and thank you, Dave. I, I will only state I wished I could make the motion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Buppi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the adoption. Now we're gonna go straight to the bottom, Dan. The adoption of the twenty twenty electrical code and adoption of ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty-one, entitled in ordinance amending the article three of the chapter eighteen of the Buena Vista Municipal Code to adopt the twenty edition of the National Electric Code. Welcome, Dan. Do you need to lead into this, Philip, or is?
Uh, I think Dan can cover it. I'll let you, I'll let you go for it.
I think he's educated now.
Yeah.
Remember the first time he showed up? Sweat rolling off of him.
He wasn't that.
Oh.
Thanks, Mayor Lacy, and trustees. Um, Paul only gave me five minutes, so I'll be brief. Um, we're here, uh, on page thirty-two, your packet is the proposed ordinance that we're, we're looking at here. And to give you a little bit of background, uh, state statutes require that um local municipalities who have an inspection program, an electrical inspection program, um, adopt what the state electrical board adopts within twelve months of their adoption. The state adopted the twenty twenty NEC uh August first of twenty twenty, so that's why we're here. Uh, about one year later, the county um has a, an ordinance similar to the one that's been drafted by, uh, I'm assuming your attorney, um, that automatically readopts new, new um additions of the NEC within twelve months of the adoption of the state, which is what's being proposed in this ordinance. So this ordinance is parallel to what the county has and would um alleviate the necessity to have this meeting going forward, uh, this agenda item going forward in future um additions of the code. Um, the state requires that each municipality adopt what they do at a minimum. Um, the local jurisdictions can't amend the code, but they can't amend it to be less restrictive than the state. When that legislation was passed in the state legislature, it was made a matter of statewide concern. So it applies to um throughout the state. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions. We did um go through uh the changes uh to the twenty twenty NEC. Most of them are um clarifying or they are um amending or they're changing the order of text or code provisions or um, you know, um, minor things that really don't have a lot of impact on the contractors out in the field. With the exception of a few items that we've identified, which I'll cover real briefly. Uh, the new code will require ground fault circuit interrupter protection for two hundred and twenty volt receptacles. Currently, it's only a hundred, hundred and twenty volt receptacles that require it. Um, there's a requirement for surge protection uh that isn't currently required in, within the integral to the electrical system. Requires uh the main disconnect to be located on the outside of the structure. Um, Chaffey County used to have an amendment to require that. We got rid of it uh about eight years ago. But the code now is caught up to require it. And the really, really the reason for that is if there's a, a, a fire or other type of an emergency that that disconnect can be um accessed from the outside of the house. So the firefighters don't have to go out. Usually they pull the meter anyway, but um, that's the reason for it. So they could shut it off before the inner building. Um, that really isn't a, doesn't have a significant impact on cost. Uh, and then the other item was requiring all outlets and basements finished or unfinished to be um GFI protected. Uh, currently, it only requires unfinished basements. I think the reason for that is because, you know, you're below grade, the chances of moisture is um higher. Uh, basements can flood, so they require all um outlets and basements to be GFI protected. The uh monetary impact of these changes is probably uh a few hundred dollars per house. The, the major changes uh that I just covered apply only to one and two family dwellings. They don't really apply to commercial. Uh, so that's really the, the only impact. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, any other questions, trustees? And this is more, and I, well, I guess I'll just clarify more at a county level uh because county's doing all of the inspections in that respect anyway, correct, Dan?
Well, yeah, the, the um, uh, you know, adopts the codes in the unincorporated portions. And then each of the municipalities, uh, all three of the municipalities also have to adopt it in order to enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
Even though the county does it in, 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 does the inspections in Buena Vista, Buena Vista still has to adopt it in order for us to enforce it.
Got you. Thank you. Other questions? Clarifying. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve, deny, move with amendments.
Motion to approve ordinance number nine, number nine, series twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
Second Fay, further discussion. Let's have roll call power.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Buppi.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, and as usual, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Uh, public hearing for the local historic designation for the Buena Vista Heritage Museum. Adoption of resolution number thirty-three, series twenty twenty-one, entitled, "A Resolution Designating the Buena Vista Heritage Museum Building Located at 506 East Main Street as a Historic Structure." Is. Mark Doring, yes, Mark's here. Mark, you gonna lead off?
I, I will lead off and then I'll turn it over to Suzy Kelly with the Heritage Museum.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, uh, staff report starts on page thirty-four, your packet. Philip, if you would, bring up page thirty-nine, which is the ARL photograph. Um, this is a request for a local designation of a historical landmark for the uh former Chaffey County Courthouse, which is currently occupied by the Buena Vista Heritage Museum. It's probably the most iconic building in town and is already on the National Register of Historic Places that was done back in nineteen seventy-nine. Um, so that is one criteria that you could choose to use for designating a local landmark. Uh, national landmark status is a, a very prominent thing, but it doesn't necessarily provide for a lot of protections, whereas local landmarking provides for a lot of protections. So the, the request went to the Historic Preservation Commission or HPC on June third. They voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Trustees uh to uh adopt a resolution designating this as a local landmark. The key here, this is for the Chaffey County Courthouse, the national landmark designation for the courthouse complex, which included the county jail, which is now Buena Vista um Public School District's administration building. We are only seeking local landmark status of the museum property. So um, the, the code allows for a, a very criteria for designating one you can do just because it is a nationally landmarked thing. Or you can apply the criteria in the code, there are sixteen criteria, this building meets at least nine of them. And so um, we provided that analysis for those criteria, but we're recommending the approval because it is a nationally landmarked building and is probably the most significant building in town. With that, I'll be quiet and let Suzy come up and talk about the structure and their request.
And real quick, uh, are there, this is a public hearing, are there any clarifying questions for Mark at this point in time?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Suzy?
Kelly.
Please.
President Buena Vista for seventy-four years. Anyhow, I have been very active with the Museum Association and we are really happy that the HPC did the study and we have done a lot of studies on our building. And it, it's definitely eligible to be on the town's list as well as a national. It was built in eighteen eighty-three, actually it started in eighty-two and completed in eighty-three. It's been a county seat and then in nineteen twenty-eight, Salida was so big, they got the county seat. So the building was turned over to the school district and the school district had it until they decided it was not safe for a school because of no fire sprinklers, that stairs going up were just like a funnel for they, so they quit using it for a school. And that's when the school district gave it to the town of Buena Vista. And then in two thousand and three, the town of Buena Vista citizens voted to get, sell it to the Buena Vista Heritage. And I hate to tell you this, but the school district bought it for a dollar from the county and we bought it from the town for a dollar. So it's probably the best building in town, but the cheapest purchase. Anyhow, we would like to see this put on the town's registration and available for the, any pluses that come. And this will be our third building that HPC has tried to get on, on the town's list. We're working on a lot of other ones, so. Or that's our request, and if you have any questions, I have lots of information. I even brought a few notes in case, you know, you asked me something I didn't have in my head.
Trustees, any questions for Heritage? Yes, go ahead.
You make a point of saying the pluses. Are there any minuses to doing this?
No. Not that I can see or that HPC has seen.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I open this portion of the public hearing to public comment. Seen any hands up there, Philip? I know I caught you off guard. Jeff wants to speak, but that's all right. Come back.
I am not seeing any hands, Mayor.
See anything? Okay, I close this portion of the public hearing to public comment. Uh, any other clarifying questions at this point for staff or heritage? Okay, I've closed a portion of the public comment. Um, I think the point made by staff that I guess hits home is it gives more protection. The fact that it's national is, is, that's impressive. But if we can get it as a local designation, it gives more protection, which I think stands up. It just stands up.
I think it needs that.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Trustees, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, Cindy Williams came in just after you closed public hearing and said that she was online but was unsure what to do to speak.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment. Cindy, if you would like to make a comment, please, go ahead. State your name and address.
Let me give her permission first. Hold on.
Okay.
All right.
And thank you, Michael.
Cindy, you should have permission now.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you. I was just um gearing up for the next session. I didn't mean to interrupt this one, although I think it's fabulous and I love the work that uh Suzy's doing.
Wonderful. Thanks. Sorry to interrupt, guys.
That's right. Thank you, Cindy. That's all right, Michael. We, we appreciate your service. I will close this portion of public, public hearing to public comment.
I would like to make a motion
Thank you.
to adopt resolution number thirty-three.
Okay. Further discussion? Hold on, let's do a roll call, please.
Sorry, who seconded the motion?
Uh, Nyberg.
I'm sorry.
Nyberg, I'm sorry.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Buppi?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, and thank you, Heritage. Thank you very much. Yeah, we're getting.
One wants to hang out?
Unlonely soldier of.
Any more historic information?
I thought the write-up was great, actually. Impressed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Chaffey County Recreation Plan. Um, we had had previous presentations on this, um, extended the timeframe for comment. Um, now we're coming back and I see Kimberly moving. Kimberly's presenting tonight. In vision, Chaffey County Co-Chair Cindy Williams, who is now online with the Zoom meeting. Um, I understand Jim Pitts has been promoted to another district. Am I correct, Philip? Is that how I want to put that?
He's very promoted up.
Promoted up.
And, and their organization.
In the organization, which is a good thing for him. Maybe not for, well, it will be for us because he's our representative. We'll pray.
Right, right.
So anyway, um, this will be a, I guess I'll call it, or less a final presentation to bring forward what they've done.
Yeah.
Man, do we need to lead in by?
I, I will as soon as I can move this around a little.
That's right, he's playing.
Oh, make it smaller. There we go. Now I can grab it. Make it just a little easier. See, all right, so. Uh, PowerPoint. Goodness. All right.
No matter what you do, Philip, I'm impressed.
Thanks.
Just saying.
It's your dream, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so yes, we are bringing this uh discussion back. Um, thank you, Mayor, for introducing some of our guest speakers. And Mike, if you haven't moved Cindy back to a panelist, please do so. Um, so this was first visited, I think, early June, if I'm not mistaken, roughly. Um, and uh, you know, at that time, the plan was getting close to the end of the public, public input portion and um our board at the time had requested um an extension of that public input period, which we did um, um, you know, go back to the rec council and, and made that request. And they did uh extend it for another couple of weeks. And then they have concluded that process and have uh spent quite a bit of time talking with stakeholders and also going through the uh County Planning Commission, who reviewed and, and held a, a public discussion, public um review. And ultimately, it uh voted to approve. And ultimately it voted to approve or adopt or support the, the rec plan. So we're bringing this back to the town board because, one, we wanted to provide, let Cindy and Kim provide an update on where the process is at. And make sure that any additional questions or concerns from the board could be addressed. Ultimately, staff isn't looking for any formal, this is not a resolution, we're not looking for any formal statements of support. But we, we do want to make sure that our current board is aware and supportive of this overall effort. Because later on in this discussion, we'll, we'll get to a few points where some of our town capital plans, especially out of our rec. Recreation and public works departments overlap with this countywide rec plan. And so there's good synergy and opportunity there to go forward for grant funding and things like that. So with that, Kim, am I turning it over to you or Cindy?
I think Suzie's gonna start tonight.
Okay.
I decided to come.
Dan, if you can, do you have the presentation up, Philip?
I do, and I can share it so that you can see it.
That would be awesome. All right, thanks. Well, thanks, thanks all for having us back and for Philip and Earl for the collaboration on this. So as, as we said, we, the planning commission had an extensive review. And then adopted the Chaffee County Outdoor Recreation Management Plan, as it's formally called, as part of the county comprehensive plan. And what we wanted to do tonight is just give you a really quick recap of what's in the plan. Talk about the feedback that we got during the thirty-day comment period and how it was addressed. And then speak to implementation of the plan and like Philip said, how it interconnects with the towns and how we can all. Work together across the county to help pull in funding from outside sources to support the plan. And then Kim's gonna share some early wins that are already going on, so hopefully that'll be all fun and we'll take any questions you have. So if you flip to the next, next one, please.
Sorry, I was also moving Commissioner Keith Baker to a panelist. I forgot to mention he's joined us as well, so.
So the, yeah, thank you for that. So the Chaffee Rec Plan is brought to you by the Chaffee Recreation Council. The council includes twenty, twenty leaders in the county and you'll see their name in a second. That includes Earl Richmond and all the town rec managers. It also includes Commissioner Baker, who's been a critical link to us, to the National Association of Counties. And he can weigh in on this as well. So just a, the, the quick, and thanks for being here, Keith. I know you're busy. Quick recap on what's in the plan. It has four elements. The first idea is to keep it, keep it clean. That includes managing camping so that it's high quality and low impact across the county. We actually spent the entire day today with about twenty folks from the US Forest Service and, and staff from the BLM. Over at Crest Abute, looking at how they're managing camping and we took away some great lessons learned from that, so. Excited to get going on that. Part two of keeping it clean is getting the right infrastructure. Think restrooms and, and that kind of stuff, parking facilities, all of that. Second element is to keep it fun. The plan focuses on supporting and endorsing exceptional experiences in and around. Our communities, in and around our towns or, or the community concentration zones. So that's a key element. That's all really about us kind of doubling down and supporting what you all do, knowing that just about every visitor. That comes to Chaffee County stops in town and folks love the experiences in and around town. There's a piece in the plan around encouraging rec ed, ethics with more education and enforcement. There's a piece around sustaining local wildlife populations, which also are a key economic driver, hunting and fishing. As well as ag operations. And then finally, a element of the plan is to keep it all going and that includes, this is the five-year plan. It requires about twenty million dollars of funding, about fifteen in capital and five for maintenance. So we're all in as a council to, to work together to try to find that money and put it in place. And then if you flip to the next slide, please. So the Chaffee Rec Council, just so you know, like we said. Key leaders from our land management agencies, both of our district rangers. BLM, CPW, top management for them all involved. Commissioner Baker, Commissioner Felton involved from the county. All the rec managers, chambers of commerce, et cetera. So a nice, I mean, that, this is who is developing this plan and working to implement this plan. And then we also provide all community members a chance to have input on the plan every month. With the rec task force. We have over a hundred folks that are currently members of that body and it's open to the public. Meeting next week, actually. So that's how we connect to everybody. And then moving on to the next slide. So when we did the full thirty-day comment period, including the extension that you guys asked for. We had, we had fabulous community input on that. We had a nice website that Kim put together that allowed folks to engage with that plan in their own time. Pretty simply, we had more than three thousand views on that. That was shared in the paper and on radio and by. Social media and all that. So three thousand people, three, three thousand views on the site. We had two hundred and seventy comments come in on that site. And we also received forty-one letters and emails regarding the plan elements. We did a pretty extensive analysis of all that. We separated, you know, some comments have multiple ideas, all that separated out into four hundred and thirty ideas. They were analyzed, they came out in thirty themes. And what the rec council, the rec council reviewed all this, all of them, read all the comments. And they worked to address the comments, you know, kind of thinking of this Overton window model, which maybe you guys use as well, where we're really trying to find. The, the center of things that are acceptable to most, but we recognize there's always going to be some folks out on, you know, kind of both ends of the spectrum that, you know, everybody's not going to be happy, but everybody's heard. Working to find the center. So with that, flipping forward, next slide, big themes. We're really encouraged. About three quarters of the feedback was positive, either support for specific elements in the plan. So there was some support for even more action beyond what's in the plan. Especially as related to. Dogs, OHBs and, and trail maintenance. There was a push in the plan for making sure that there's a balance between wildlife and experience. And then also a lot, you know, some concern we heard around how the plan interacts with federal processes. So if you flip to the next, next screen, and I might, I got a little battery light, so I might have to grab a plug here in a sec. On the, we heard feedback around the balance between protecting wildlife and having more experiences or new trails. And also around community concentration zones, but honestly, it was pretty mixed. We had forty-four comments in support of the wildlife elements in the plan. We had thirty-eight comments that said, you know, we want more trails and connectors, especially in town. Some, on the flip side of that, about eighteen comments that actually had concern about more trails and a push for more, more focus on maintenance. So anyway, we took all that on board. There was a reference in the original plan about saying no to new rec development in wildlife, in, in high-quality wildlife habitat. The council changed that pretty materially to discouraging development in the top undeveloped habitat in the county. And then we clarified in the plan that the community concentration zones, against ten of those. Is really simple. It's focusing our resources to develop new infrastructure in and around towns where it benefits the most folks. There's nothing limiting or restricting or anything like that. It doesn't tell people rec to rare to recreate. It's just saying, hey, let's. With the, with great assets in these places. Those concentration zones, we added, they'll be periodically updated as the community grows. And we understand there's critical infrastructure needs as well, all over the place, including on public lands. And then on the next, next slide, please. There was concern expressed in the plan or questions about how the plan interacts with the federal land management process, including travel management. We had clarification, I mean, all the agencies have been involved, so there is, the short answer is there is no conflict with NEPA. The plan does not sidestep NEPA, it doesn't replace NEPA. The agencies still do that. And the plan is, is right in line with the National Association of Counties' best practice guidelines, which Commissioner Baker may want to talk to. He was part of putting those in place in twenty twenty. It also is in line with an order that Governor Polis had just last year, asking communities to develop exactly these kind of plans. To help Colorado keep our recreation industry and our assets amazing. So. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of it. Again, I, I mean, this doesn't in any way replace agency processes. It's just the community working with agencies. And every, you know, the agencies are on board with all that. And then next, next slide, please. So as Philip mentioned, there was a meeting held with the planning commission. There was extensive, that was a public meeting. There was a lot of community comment. Most of the rec council members was there, including the BLM and the Forest Service. And that's available on YouTube. I think that's been provided to you so that if you have any outstanding questions that may add to it. And right now we're advancing implementation and funding development. Next slide. I'm gonna, with that, I'll maybe pass it over to Earl and he can talk about some of the important things in the plan that are in Buena Vista. And then we can talk about how we're working collaboratively to, to, to help make those happen.
Thanks, Cindy. Yes, I've been a part of this. Advisory board for about sixteen months now. It's been a great experience. Like Cindy said. Many different agency leaders and municipal staff have had a lot of great conversations about how to. Best move forward with a growing number of tourism and all sorts of outdoor recreational users coming to our valley. But we were able to list out and identify some projects in Buena Vista that would be beneficial. That could use help with some planning and collaboration with other towns. So what we identified as our top list items are revamping the Whipple Bridge, redoing the decking. Restrooms at the Whipple Bridge area, which has a huge amount of usership every day. Community center restroom upgrades here. Whipple Trail upgrades and then the Walton Loop, which is our ADA accessible loop around the Disc Golf Course. So these are all familiar items for our council. We talked about them. They've been presented in. Some grant opportunities through GOCO. But we feel now that we're on this list and this list has surfaced to the top these projects. And we have a great opportunity to refer to the plan when we're going for future grant opportunities. So as we know, Buena Vista is used heavily as a base camp. So people come here to start their adventure or finish their adventure. So in the morning they come and meet and take a shower. These are the restrooms here, these are the restrooms and then go out and climb the fourteen or they come back. So we are seeing a huge impact in our. Facilities here and just feel very confident that now that we're. Through this whole process and have these projects listed as priorities, we'll be able to accomplish them. Not only as a community by ourselves, but we also have the idea of teaming up with Salida and Pontius Springs instead of just. Buena Vista asking for help to, to revamp and redo or build additional restrooms that we, we're countywide ask. And show the importance of additional sanitation facilities in our whole valley and apply as a group of. Towns instead of just the town of Buena Vista. So collaboration has been great. Feel like we have a really good opportunity to look forward to get some of these projects done. We're also looking at this all-lands camping plan, so. We know that some people are already camping in BB. We have a lot of open space. Other towns are implementing camping options. How are we gonna move there right now? We don't know, but we want to keep an eye on it. But also we want to make sure if we're making some good decisions in our public lands that maybe we can mirror some of that in town. Rec adopters, so that would be working. Within our rec master plan here to have a similar system that is being used right now on public lands to. See what the impacts are on trails and campsites and all these additional users. And we could use that same platform and same technology to keep an eye on our local parks here. It'd be exciting. And then collaborating with Conservation Corps, which is a great group that can help with volunteer time. Help those do a lot of needed improvements. And then also in progress right now is a rec rangers program. That is taking care of our adjacent local lands, Four Mile and other zones. And I could have Kim maybe speak to that a little bit more because she was actually out with the rec rangers in the last couple of weeks. And seeing hands-on what this group is doing to protect our local resources.
Sure, I can talk about that now. This is the fun part because things are definitely happening on the ground out there and I'm really happy to show you. So the picture on the left there are the rec rangers. There are five of them. Four added, one who would have been working by herself this year had we not added this program. And then there are two others who are management level folks working at the Salida Ranger District. So the US Forest Service is putting an amount of funding into this and they are managing the program. These folks are going out on forest service land, BLM land, state land board land. They're doing a lot of work out there. I went out with them, spent a couple hours. We started at Bob's Rock and they fixed that buck and rail fence around the parking at Bob's Rock. Lickety split, got that done really quick. We jumped on three seventy-five and headed up into Four Mile. You know, on our way, they were answering questions for folks, looking for camping, asking where they could go. Like new camping areas that were starting to get developed on sides of the roads. Went all the way up to the, the Buffalo Peaks Wilderness Trailhead up there at the end. And those are the pictures on the right. Put up some signs. Someone had camped the weekend before in the Trailhead parking lot and they had pallets. Had a big bonfire, pallets left a bunch of nails in the parking lot there. So that's the bottom picture. They're erasing that ash pile, picking up all those nails, throwing them away. Put a Trailhead sign there right at the edge of the parking lot that said Trailhead, no camping here. And then we headed back down. Let's take a look at the next slide. I also wanted to show you guys also this week. We have the SCC sawyer crews back in the area. This is actually up near Dry Lake, which is north of Maysville. Up in the woods, they're cutting about a hundred trees a day out of that area, which is a high wildfire risk area. This is a mostly female saw crew that's working together and camping out all summer with the Southwest Conservation Corps. But on the left there at the bottom, you can see where they're, they're chunking these up when they're done felling the trees and piling them up. The day that I took these pictures and left, the Forest Service Rangers were making their way up. And they picked up all of these logs that these ladies were cutting down. And go ahead and go to the next slide and you can see what it's being used for. So it's super circular and I just found that really cool. Because I work on wildfire prevention and now we're working on recreation management and it's kind of all coming together. Here in just the past couple of weeks. So again, these guys can put up that buck and rail fence super quick. This is a beautiful meadow along three seventy-five. In the background of that upper right-hand photo is Four Mile Creek. As you guys know, this is one of the only water sources in Four Mile. So there is a post there that says no motor vehicles that had been stuck in the ground for quite a while. Luckily, people were just driving right by it and camping in the meadow there that you see in the background and pretty close to the creek. So they decided, this was right before the Fourth of July holiday weekend. You know, we probably don't want to have a bunch of people driving around in that meadow because it's going to end up getting denuded. And then when it rains, the soils wash into the creek. So bottom right-hand photo is the finished fence. People can still walk over there, go visit the creek. They can even camp in the meadow. They just can't drive in it. You guys are probably aware that you're not supposed to go more than one vehicle length away from the roads in, in the back country. It's one of the biggest things they're teaching people, they told me as I talked to them. People have no idea that they. Cut into a meadow and set up their tent or have a picnic or whatever, that they should be camping in existing areas and sticking on existing trails and roads. So that was a really fun day. Learned a lot and sorry, that was like a mixture of the rec rangers and the SCC saw crews, but they kind of go together. So they've been up on Aspen. So they've been up on Aspen Meadow Ridge, putting up fence there, trying to contain some camping. They have found and put out smoldering campfires. The managers say about the rec rangers, the biggest thing that excites them is that now they have more boots in the ground, more people out there. Over the Fourth of July weekend, there were five people out in, on public lands in Chaffey County and no one that I talked to could remember ever having that many people. Over a busy holiday weekend. So. That's it for now. I have a little bit more to share later on, but I think we have more presentation first. No? Okay. Other things, I just wanted to share a little bit about education because I know some of you are really interested in that. Can we teach? You know, ourselves and our visitors to act a little bit better out there and do the right things following leave no trace ethics. So the Chaffey County Visitors Bureau has launched their Adventure by Nature campaign. I talked with you guys about that in the past. So they've got videos going out on Facebook. I am signed up for the Adventure by Nature pledge and I've been receiving emails. With these videos, one talked about camping tips, one talked about safe wildfire tips. And it's just really exciting to see them sharing that. They're getting the topics from the Chaffey Recreation Plan. And talking to us about what are our main needs related to education. The Chaffey County Visitors Bureau pays for this with the lodging tax funds. As you guys know, they also got a matching grant from CTO, the Colorado Tourism Office. It's a fifty thousand dollar marketing campaign focused on education and the things that we need to teach people. I love that it goes out on social media because people are getting it before they arrive. And the first leave no trace principle is plan ahead and prepare. So they're learning things before they get here. Recently I got a little update from Scott at CCVB. They've made fifteen of these videos. I've personally only seen four so far. There's been forty-five thousand minutes of the, of the educational video watched already, just in a couple of weeks. They've had two point one million impressions on social media. And three thousand people have signed up to take the Adventure by Nature pledge. So. You know, when you sign up, you get a discovery pass for free and then you can get two for one beers at local businesses and stuff like that. So if you're interested in knowing, hey, what are we telling our visitors about education? Adventure by nature, you can Google that and sign up for it and you can see what they're passing around out there. I wanted to share one more quick thing. The Salida Ranger District, US Forest Service won Great American Outdoor Act funding. You guys probably heard about that act in the national news last year. And they won seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for projects, infrastructure projects here on the forest. And so there's a bunch of stuff and we'll be coming out with more information, but for now. Just FYI that the Denny Creek Toilet is going to be moved off of that hill, that Trailhead Toilet and redone, brand new. Toilet there and they're doing the same thing at Tarmigan Trailhead. So I thought that would excite you guys because you know that a lot of our visitors had. Head up there and use, use those two areas. Thanks for your time. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Kim. Is there any questions for Kim? I noticed you've got some more there, Philip.
Cindy, is there any, are any other slides that we need to highlight or?
If you can go up to the, there's a slide just before Kim's pictures. And we can just touch on that and then we'll be, then we can go to questions. So we're working together as a rec council to find funds for all of these programs and the projects. We don't have any magic bucket of cash, any more than you do, but the idea is to work together. We have, just a couple of weeks ago, we were selected as one of just five communities in the state for Colorado Parks and Wildlife. Outdoor Partnership Program. That's a new program that Governor Polis created last year. That supports communities like ours and plans like this. And I think being part of that is going to give us, is giving us already a lot of visibility across the state. And I hope we can transition, transform that into some successful grants like Girl was talking about, working all together. We have funding from that to fund a, a part-time resource who is going to sit in the National Forest Foundation. They're available to help us write grants. And to help administer, you know, kind of bigger or more complex grants if the towns need that. And then, you know, we're really looking to leverage our local funds. We know, I mean, towns and counties, the JP Common Ground ballot measure. All those are sources, but none of them are enough to do all this together. So we're working to, to leverage those, to leverage them with the Great American Outdoor Act funds. And to work together to make, make all this possible as a community. It's a pretty big deal in the state. I mean, we're only. I think we're the only community that has an all lands plan like this so far. It's getting a lot of attention. It reflects well on us. Again, hopefully we can turn it into more cash coming into Chaffey County from the state. So that's it. Just wanted to share that with you and we're, I think we're all happy to take questions. Last thing, Commissioner Baker, I don't know if, if you're on, if there's anything you want to add, you're again, we appreciate. Your involvement in this and helping us connect it as well to the National Association of Counties framework.
Nothing specifically to add. I'm here primarily to answer questions and. Help with any concerns that members of the Board of Trustees may have. Add some clarity things and, and some other sorts of. Elements that might offer the, the commissioner's perspective on some of this stuff, but other than that, you guys covered everything. Outstandingly well, so. Thank you.
Trustees' questions? I had one, there was in that. If you scroll back to where you were, Philip, where it was saying, they're an advisory committee. It was like right after Kimberly talked, it was down to, it was the other direction.
Oh, okay, after.
I'm sorry, yeah. And you see right there, the, the rec council is an advisory committee to develop and implement. Advisory to whom? Does that make sense? Is that a legitimate question? I mean, we have the rec advisory board, unification advisory, you know. I'm trying to put my finger on that statement, I guess is the way to put it. They implement, but they're an advisory board. If I take our advisory boards, they don't implement. They advise us. And then we. Is that a legitimate question? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good, we can maybe add a bit of clarity to that. It's maybe oddly, oddly worded there. I mean, you're correct. The JP Rec Council is the group of twenty leaders that are working together to, to implement this plan. I, I would say in some ways, they may advise their teams. I mean, the commissioners are there. They're not advising their, their selves for sure. They're, they're helping implement. Earl's on that council, so he's helping implement. Yeah, that may be better stated as they're the, the implementation arm of this whole thing and. It's a, just that a countywide commission that's working to, to make this happen or a countywide council working to implement the plan. So yeah, that's, that's a fair question. I hopefully that clarified it.
Well, it makes sense. I, I, the, the question, I guess it leads into. And, and it still does make sense because it's an all-inclusive group that's involved in this. Who do they answer to themselves? If you, does that make sense? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I mean, it is an all-inclusive group. Don't get me wrong. So they make decisions, they spend the money, but it's on a common framework. Is that a good way to put it?
Let me take a stab at that, Duff, there. This is, this is something that we're getting a lot of questions about. It's not so much the plan itself as it is the organizational structure. Things that we've discussed over time about. How to have greater clarity and. Assurances in the public mind that there's clear lines of communication, lines of authority and accountability involved. You'll notice there on this slide that we're looking at right now. There's the two statements there with, under the clarifying roles heading. The county commissioners did formally convene and formally blessed the Envision. Project in September of twenty seventeen and tasked it with certain things. And the JP Rec Council and this Recreation Imbalance Program. Was one of the things that came out of that Envision effort, like a number of other things. And so in that respect, it does have. Kind of a blessing from the commissioners and the commissioners are involved in it and we're keenly interested in it, but. If I was drawing a sketch of the organizational chart. There's some dotted lines in there and right now there's some, some gaps there in the, in the dotted lines that need to be solidified. And it's nothing that's going to take a huge amount of work. It's not a heavy lift, but it's just something that we do need to sort out. So that we can answer these questions with greater clarity and assurances. I think, and Cindy and I have discussed this and others before, so it's not like we're hashing things out here in the meeting. But that the rec council needs to be more formally incorporated. Into the county planning structure, similar to things like you're just saying with the town. With like the Transportation Advisory Board, the Heritage Area Advisory Board and some of these others so that. The lines of authority, the lines of communication, the lines of accountability are very clear. And they can be put on the website and people can find them and, and see how it works. But now, having said that, the plan, and this is what I said at the Planning Commission meeting a few weeks ago. The plan is a good plan and everything has been done properly and with transparency. And with the, the utmost involvement of all the different user groups that we could possibly get. To get involved. There were some who were more involved than others. We all know how that works, but. The confidence in the plan and the processes by which it were arrived at, you can have the utmost confidence in the plan. Of course, it's like any other plan. We're going to have to revisit it over time and dial things in. And there's already rooms for improve, room for improvement and things that we've identified that we need to work on. That's just the nature of any plan. But, but the process that was used to develop it and everything was good.
Thank you, Keith. I think that kind of clarifies, it's more of like you say. Maybe connecting the dots, if you want to put it that way, is to really, who answers to who and how, obviously because there's going to be a lot of money flowing. Potentially through this, this rec board or this rec plan, the rec council.
Right, and, and it will probably. You know, serve in our long-term interest anyway, because once we start applying for grants. You know, these grant evaluation teams are going to be asking those questions and the better that we have solid answers and we can provide them very quickly. Then the stronger our applications are.
Thank you, Keith. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Doug kind of touched on it, but would you say that the, the heavy lifting has been done? Or was that, was the coming up with the plan the easy part? What, the question is really what happens to the group now? Do you guys continue meeting as you've been and implementing the plan or periodically update the plan or what, what, what happens from here on out?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the Chaffey Recreation Council will continue to be done a quarterly basis to guide plan implementation. The JP Rec Task Force meets on a monthly basis. That helps citizens be involved in, in implementation and to have ongoing input. Into the plan. And I think, you know, it's a great question. Is, is the work done or just beginning? I mean, I think. This is a twenty million dollar, five-year plan. I mean, it's a big, it's a, it's not a light lift. I mean, I think the rec council feels confident we can do it as a community. But there's, there's lots of work ahead and some, you know, some, some difficult things in here. I mean, managing camping at a county scale is a. That's a big project. I think we can do it together, but it's, yeah, there's, there's lots of work ahead of us, no doubt about it. For the rec council and for all the groups that are, that are part of this. I mean, there's a lot of community groups that are. Involved in carrying some of this load already, but our hope is we can supersize all that and connect it. Bring in some additional resources like National Forest Foundation that can help us as well and get, get after it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Philip, what are we, what are you looking for at this point in time? What is, what is the rec council looking for from the board?
Earl and I, in meeting with Cindy and Kim yesterday, kind of went over that question. I. I, I, I think we're looking for whatever the board's comfortable with, really. If you want to make a motion to say. We endorse this plan, I think that's one course of action. As you saw in the specific projects that were within the town scope. Those will come through our normal capital and budgeting process and so. The board will have oversight into how all those unfold when we get to actually implementation. So. You know, it's not binding the town in, in my, in my opinion in any way, but it does. What I guess what it, what I would ask from a staff standpoint is just to know that. The board is comfortable with, with where this is at. So that when we put forward some of these specific projects and we apply for grants together. That we're doing that in good faith and, and when we go approach common ground, for example. There's recognition that this was all part of a plan and we're pointing back to a plan to help justify why this is important. So. I'm not giving you a really great answer.
No, I think you can go in, in the, in the respect to say. And, and I think, and, and I'm speaking for myself here, but I think, and Keith touched on it, it's a good plan. There's some details that need to be worked out when it comes to. Lines, when it comes to getting the grant money and stuff like that. There's some things that are going to have to be worked out, but the plan itself, and I think that's the question that's in front of us. Does the board support the plan? Do you like the plan? Do you like what it says? Do you, you know, is that the following? I think that's really what staff is looking for so that. When these things come forward, they know that we're in support of it. Obviously, it's still going to go to vote. You know, whether it be matching phones or whatever it is. But do you generally support what has been presented? And I think that's really the question at hand. Do we support what the plan, does it make sense? And so that's my gut feel. Dave?
Just want to say thanks for taking our suggestion last, whatever that was, a month and a half ago to extend that comment period. That gave myself, I gave, I speak for everybody. I, I got a chance to dig a little deeper, answer some questions. Feel a lot more comfortable with, with, with what this is and what this isn't. So, yeah, I want to, I want to thank you guys for. For allowing that extra time for comment and research and I would, with that being said, make a motion. That says we support the Chaffey County Rec Plan as presented. Is that approximately?
I think so. That's a good motion. That's a good motion.
I'll second that.
I have a second, Fay, further discussion. And as was stated, it's not, doesn't obligate us to anything. It's just support of a general, general plan and, and. Earl touched on where Beavista stands in that plan at this point. And it's a living document, just like everything else we talk about. Everything's a living document. So I have a motion in a second. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Buppin?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for your support.
Yep, thank you, Kim. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Go too.
Thanks for all you do.
Next item on the agenda is the Airport Business Plan, which, presentation by manager. Jack Wiles will review the Airport Business Plan with trustees. Jack, are you still with us?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. I apologize, I, my. Video doesn't seem to be working very well at all. I'm getting like a ghost effect. Bear with me, maybe forty-five to an hour, I'll read through it. Just kidding. No, just kidding. What we got, I want to emphasize is just some of the big highlighted changes that we've made. To this business plan as opposed to the two thousand sixteen version. The big thing is we tried to make the document smarter, a little more user friendly. And, you know, just, and it's a more robust, for example, history and et cetera, but. Before I go through that. Excuse me, I think we might have Dennis Heap online. He's the chair to our Air Advisory Board. I would invite him if he has any comments and. Or any input he, welcome that now if he's, if he's available.
Jack, I'd move Dennis to the panelist.
Hey, Dennis, do you want to say any words at this point? You're a panelist now, so if you come off mute, we can hear you.
Let's not.
Oh. Where am I? Am I back on?
Yep, we can hear you back.
Okay. If if Dennis.
Let me just say, just say a moment.
There he is. Go ahead.
Okay. And Jack started to talk about it, but the, in 2015, the Airport Advisory Board created the first business plan, and that was updated in 2016. And what you're looking at now, the 2021, is really a great document. It's a standalone document in that you can, the reader can just. Get a good overview of the airport and where it stands within the community just by reading the document, but Jack and Chandra have done some excellent work by. Connecting it, linking it to various documents, so you can really get, really get into it if you'd want to, and so. I'm just pleased and the Advisory Board is just pleased we've worked on this for about six months with the staff. And so I turn it back over to Jack.
Thank you, Dennis. Yeah, so. What I'll get, I'll just go highlight some of the major parts here and I'll get Philip to jump through it. So if we go down to the table contents. Right on history. So I think it should work. Yeah, so if you click on history, so. One of the things we've done with this business plan, we've updated the history, sort of gone back a little farther. And so, and we had Dan Cartwright, a member of our Air Advisory Board, did some deep dive into the history here, so. Turns out this airport has, or air operations in Buena Vista has been around since 1920. So it's quite, it's quite interesting. The first airfield is out by the rodeo grounds. The other big takeaway, this airport, as it evolved, it was very a community, community inspired. Event. It wasn't like a state driven. It wasn't, it started as a community driven. Enterprise. And you will notice what, when I had Philip click on the table contents, it automatically will drive you to the pair that you're looking for, and that's what I was meaning. We tried to make this document a little smarter that you can just, instead of scroll, 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 if you want to go to one part, you just click on the table contents, it will take you there. Another part, economic impact, if we just go down to, should be 61 on the document or in the packet. So we've added a little more of the impact study. Back in 2018, for example, the state did a, of all the airports in the state of Colorado. They did a, an impact study of economic impact study. So we've added that to this business plan. And as well as a hyperlink. So if you clicked on the hyperlink, it would take you to their study. Yeah, and. But we've also added a little bit in the document, so you don't have to jump around. You could read the doc, like if you go down just a bit. You'll see. The part that specifically pertains to Central Colorado Regional Airport, but this is in. The hyperlink, if you drove to their actual study, you could see other airports, and you could also get the. The metadata behind what, how they come up with these numbers. So that's part of what we're doing. Another big thing we did to be in page 69 in the trustee document. We up the marketing plan for this airport, so we add some documents to the marketing plan. And a little more what we really want to do in the market, not just billboards and magazines, but we've added quite a bit more. And again, hyperlinks will take you to. Our. Anaxes that we put in, a little more information, rather than trying to make. A monster business plan of pages and pages, we hyperlink it. The other reason, like you'll notice, we have N X A, N X E. Is if these are going to be somewhat living documents, so rather than rebuild a business plan every year because something changes, we can just go to the annex. And add to that. So that was another big change. Drop down to 73 in the, on the packet. So you can see like a few pictures there, but 73 is another thing we are doing more. We put more into the. Excuse me, the noise abatement of the airport, and we're trying to make a neighbor friendly. Approach to the airport, so we'll be adding more and more to this. And it'll be a hyperlink that'll drive to what do you do for low flying aircraft, or here's some of the FAA regulations. And also for this, here's the routes that we'd like pilots to fly in and around our traffic pattern. So just to try to make more approachable for pilots and the community, so they know. Why an airplane is flying in the direction they're going. And finally, down 74, page 74, we've added a little more bio. Biographies to our organization, to who helps us, from the Board of Trustees to key players.
Who's that guy?
The birthday boy there. Happy birthday, by the way, Philip.
Thanks, Jack.
Then we put our org chart on there, and again, all this is hyperlinked. To, you know, to this chart, and we have our own, our own stuff, and if you go down a little farther, you'll see the bios. To the individual that are on our Air Advisory Board, so, you know, reach out and give some kudos to the hard work of our advisory boards. And that's, you can see, and I, and a couple, like, you can see layout plan, and we even have a hyperlink to our master plan, so again, is what Dennis. Was all doing, do, this is kind of one stop shopping. And finally, we just have the annexes at the end that you can just jump right to an annex if you want to read something specific, and that's right at the bottom. Page 84. So if you didn't want to go through the whole thing, you had one specific thing you want to look at, you can go right to an annex and read that. There you go. So that's the the business plan. I got, you know, obviously, I'll entertain any questions. We do value any input of anybody sees something that, you know, have you thought of this or whatever, and we can. Once we pass this point, we'll read it and then we'll post it on our webpage, final approval. That's it for me for the business plan.
Steve's questions? I like the changes, Jack. User friendly makes a difference. Anybody else? Questions? Comments?
Can I like this?
Go ahead. Go ahead, thank you.
I liked a lot. It was easy to read very, there's a lot of things in there I didn't even know, so. Look, history and whatnot, so. Great job.
There, if I may, I just want to acknowledge the hard work. Once again, they, Jack did a good job pointing that out, but. I, I can remember prior to 2015, when the first draft of a business plan was created. It was something that was discussed over and over and over again, and the board was bringing it up, like, boy, I wish we had a business plan for our airport. You know, what's our mission? What are we, what are our target customers? What's, how does that tie into a marketing strategy and and all of that, and and to see where this is at now, the professional. Level that this is at now is is great, so.
Definitely no comparison to what we we dealt with back in the past.
This, this is well done.
Thank you very much, and I will say it was, it was a lot of work, but the Air Advisor Board put a, definitely helped us out a lot, a lot of input from all the board members.
I think there's been some. I'll call them professional moves that have been made at the airport that have made a big difference. It's now a airport. It's not a toy anymore that we kind of play with. It's definitely going somewhere. Any comments for Jack?
Can I make just one cop, one, one question?
You bet.
On on N X A, I just wanted to make sure that. There's, there's a section, if you'll click on that and go to, I think, what's the 91 in your packet?
It goes to page 91 or?
Is it 91? Well, no, it's, it's, it's N X A. Then, yeah, right down there, if you'll just scroll back up. Let's see, scroll down to where it says fostering a vibrant enterprise business.
Now, let's see if I can find that. Let me go to 91 and see if that's it. I probably could have just clicked it, but. No idea where that would have sent me. All right, here we go, here we go, there we go.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to make sure, because we had some last minute changes, and then the board came back and where it says that. In the second. Second bullet point, it says both aviation and non aviation business. And it was the board's recommendation that the non aviation business clients be struck. And that we just, so that we, it just reads that it's aviation related. Businesses that we're looking for. And because for personal standpoint, I know that that can get the report in trouble.
And we've made those amendments. I had sent this to the, let's pack it in for the trustees after those comments, so we have made those changes.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Amendment to 2021 Budget Adjustment Adoption Resolution Number 34, Series 2021. A resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, adopting the adjusted and supplemental budget for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning on the first day of January 2021. And ending on the last day of December 2021. And that is the Resolution Number 35, Series 2021, entitled, The Resolution of the Board of Trustees for Town of Buena Vista. Is there two of them?
Yes, two res.
There is, I'm sorry. We will, I assume, cover both of them at the same time.
Correct.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and read this one. A resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, adopting supplemental appropriations. For the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado, for the calendar year beginning first day of January 2021 and ending the last day of December 2021. So one is a. Adjustment and the other is an appropriation. Thank you, show, lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor, Trustees. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I've been kind of on and off the the microphone, so. I am bringing forward our midyear adjustment for the calendar year 2021. This budget was adopted at the end of 2020. And I have been keeping track or went back and kept track of all of the changes. That you guys have voted on and added a couple of items, I believe. Yes, I, I adjusted the year to date sales tax revenue between. Up through May, which is the most current. So these, just to refresh your memory, we bought the Dryfield Ditch Farm. That was an amendment to the water funds and the Odyssey of the Mind. Other items we adjusted for were a couple of grants. For the bear proof trash cans and the Main Street. Light replacement, the Chapey County Fire Patrol, which we just heard a presentation that included that. Fire Protection I G A, which is was dissolve, are. Closing down the fire department and. Negotiating with Chapey County Fire for services regarding fires. Small business to, a small adjustment to the contribution for Chapey County Housing Admin. I guess it was a few hundred dollars off. And we wanted to true that up. And additional staff per the May 10th, 2021 work session recommendation. I have included. The. Resolutions. But after the resolutions are, let's see, on page 106. Is the Adjustment Register, which will. Describe. All of the adjustments and what was done. And Attachment B. On. Page 113. Is the original budget, the adjustments and the adjusted budget. In a spreadsheet format, which you're used to. And then I've included off to the right, the budget adjustment number, which will reference back to. The Attachment A budget adjustment numbers. And so you can kind of. You can kind of peruse that. And then Attachment C. On page. Zipping through here.
133.
Oh, you got there first. That's not fair. That is, just so that you know, that is the. Fund balance. Projected fund balance report per the adjusted budget. And so you can see in. The general fund, we have 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars is projected. That's just with. The. Additional or revenue surpluses that we have actually recognized through May. We still have June through December revenue and likely surpluses of at least some amount. To add to that, so. Even after all of the adjustments in the general fund, we still have 1.2. And. I'll take any questions. It's pretty much all there. I don't want to. Insult you by reading it line by line, but there. There's a bunch there. I figure you probably already went through it or not, and any questions?
You don't trust us, Michelle?
I know how thrilling this is to you.
Hey, I saw the red letter entries.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I was impressed.
It was red.
Any questions? I kind of like how she led into all of the adjustments you made. You notice how she, you know. Guys, in other words, you're doing too many. She has to redo this, and it's all fun.
I already recorded the adjustment you made tonight.
Already?
So, so if we were to take a million dollars and and use it for the police station. It would look to me like that would take that 1.275 million down to 275,000. So we'd have that plus the 27% reserve.
Plus the Tabor Reserve. Correct. That's correct.
And that is correct. That's if we did it today. If we do it in three months, we'll have three months more of surplus, which you don't want to count on, but it's likely. We'll have something in to add to that fund balance.
Well, we also, Michelle, have some, obviously, from midsummer on, we have more expenses also, correct?
Yes, but those are, those are built into the.
So they're already accounted for, so wouldn't necessarily reflect.
This is assuming we spend everything in our budget, which we don't typically do.
Normally doesn't happen.
So I think trustee Fay is, brings up a great example, that is accurate. But we still view that as a pretty conservative projection fund balance for the fact for those reasons. Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion or motions. Or a motion to approve two resos at the same time, however, however a trustee wishes to approach this.
I'll make the motion. I, I would like to make a motion that we approve the adoption of Resolution Number 34 and Number 35, as stated.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Second Nyberg. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Faye, yes. Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Switzer.
Yes.
Trustee Bolton.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. And thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Mayor.
Next item is staff reports, town administrator.
All right, page nine hundred, hundred something, big number one thirty-four of the packet. So a few things to cover this evening. I'll try to get through it relatively quickly. Thank you for those that filled out the poll for there are the survey poll doodle poll for the tour of the water intake gallery and treatment plant. Looks like we're targeting now based on that input Thursday, September ninth at five thirty P M. So we will organize around that date. We do plan to have some food, even though we'll be walking around. So something you can carry and eat.
Turkey legs and.
Turkey legs, like, okay, okay, interesting. All right. So look forward to that and we will extend the invite to staff as well. I think it's always a good opportunity to go take a look at that facility. We are thinking that we at Town Hall and then carpool up so that it's easier to park out there. So I'll look forward to that. We are still looking at end of August, August thirty-first intergovernmental meeting in Salida. I meet with the other administrators this week and we'll get more information out to you soon on that. We do have a vacancy on our board. Trustee Amy Eckstein resigned from her position. And so I wanted to discuss with the board and get direction, what the next steps of that process looks like. Legal has advised me that the board has sixty days to appoint or go to an election for that vacancy. So what we're looking for tonight is direction, whether you want to take this or put this to a special election or go through an appointment process. We did go through an appointment process as recently as two thousand sixteen, November, which was successful.
It is successful.
Okay. Trustee Rowe is appointed by the board at that time to to fill a vacancy. And yeah, we've we do view that as a as a as a good process and we would, if the board wants to go that route, we would be looking at something similar, which would entail making this public, putting it out to the paper, through the paper, through social media and such, asking for letters of interest. And pending getting with a deadline prior to the to the next meeting, which is August twenty-fourth, so that we can determine if we get multiple applications or letters of interest, then we will kind of set it up as a work session format so that people can come and present and the board can ask questions and do things like that. And then actual go through the actual voting on an appointment in the regular meeting right after the work session. So that's that's a very quick, high-level explanation of what the appointment would look like. And that is what staff is proposing versus a special election, which obviously would impact staff, mainly our town clerk Paula, and would also cost.
Another budget amendment.
Yep, we would have to add to the budget. But obviously that is a is is an option. So we wanted to present that to the board and let you all give us direction.
Would entertain them in one direction or the other.
I'd like to make a motion that we do this through appointment.
Thank you. Have a motion.
Thank you.
Second Nyberg. Further discussion?
Um, what we do, I remember previously, because I was there, did choice. Is that something again? Because I like that idea.
I would say we would do it very similar.
Yeah, similar to that.
Everybody votes for their top three or.
Yeah, exactly. Or something like that. And that way they, you know, you don't have to, you can like, I like this person and this person. So.
I think so. It depends on how many people. I mean, when you you were one of like eight or nine people, right? It was a pretty heavy one that that time. Yep.
Yeah, I think I won by one vote.
And it was a Chad. It wasn't quite. So any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you all very much. We'll get that lined up then.
Thank you. And we and we'll we'll set the process up like as Joel mentioned, based on how many applicants.
And like you say, have a work session ahead of time and any discussion we want to have. And that's great.
Do it.
Thank you, board.
Uh, thank you. And again, August twenty-fourth will be the date for that activity. So moving along, we just a very quick update with Boys and Girls Club. I know it was it was mentioned in the work session this evening, talking about our town campus here and the future of Town Hall and 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 this block that the town owns. And so very excited to see the Boys and Girls Club have have come back after doing some internal planning and we have a a a letter of intent that both sides like. And I think accurately spells out the intent of town at this at this stage. So we'll bring that back August twenty-fourth. So the board can hear an update from the Boys and Girls Club and also give direction on the letter of intent for that. Since the last meeting, the 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 future of large events out at the Meadows property is a little different as you all are aware. But in that, in our previous meeting, I did bring up that there was a request from the property owner for a town trustee to participate as a liaison from the town on just future discussions, whether that's on specific events or utilizing that as more of an event center. I'm not aware besides Meet Me at the Creek of any ongoing conversations at this, but that can change as we have seen at any given moment. So I I did want to bring up that the trustee Rowe did express interest in participating in that respect. So I did want to give the opportunity to the board to say, do you do you like that or no? And.
Very good.
Yeah. I'd enjoy being part of that. And I think it's also good for us to know what's going on over there.
I think it's important.
Yeah, so you know.
Because they did drop the twelve event also. Am I correct? You withdrew that.
That is my understanding is they're no longer pursuing that application at this time.
No. So back to the original statement is everybody agreed that no problem having Devon being a liaison.
Right.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thanks, Devon.
Maybe. Thank you. Finally, just to point out a couple of things going on with CML again to promote the conference in September. If you're interested, please let Paula know so we can help you get you signed up. And then another new thing that came up, their CML does district meetings. I think a pre-COVID, which could have been two years, three years ago, I don't remember exactly, but Cindy and Duff and I, maybe a couple of others went down when it was in Salida. And a pretty good opportunity to connect with not only your county area, but the district. So a little bit further out. It is a little bit farther out, this, the the meeting that's coming up in September. And I think it's probably an hour, hour and a half drive.
Close to hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
Where's you at?
Uh, Rockvale.
Over there.
Towards, I have to figure out where that was.
Kind of towards Cotapaxi.
Past, yeah.
I even passed, yeah.
So it, yes, that's right. So a little bit of a commitment there, but I wanted to mention that CML's advertising, asking for registration by August twenty-seventh. So if there was multiple or multiple participants, we could look at maybe arranging a carpool. So feel free to reach out to me if there's an interest in that. And finally, you saw I put some things on your desk and I didn't bother putting them on my own desk.
This one though.
Yes, I wanted to mention, try to make it brief. There's quite a bit going on related to housing right now and the Chaffey, Chaffey County Leadership Roundtable that for the last year and a half has been meeting on a regular basis focused on COVID has now started allocating some of their meetings towards, thank you, towards talking a little bit about housing and really giving Becky Gray a platform from the Housing Authority to to start expressing to some of the leaders around the county, what she's seeing and some of the the discussions on some some short-term midterm and long-term approaches. And I, you know, we don't have time to go through everything that I've given you here as a handout. I also shared the presentation that was discussed Monday, but I I did want to point out that the town specifically is doing quite a bit around housing. And, you know, whether that's the discussions we're having right now about short-term rental policy, that looks to be something that we'll be bringing back August twenty-fourth and first meeting in September for actually looking at code changes and policy changes. So I know there's a lot of discussion about who's doing a moratorium or who's doing, you know, whatever. I I would, I would just emphasize that I I think the town is moving ahead with actual action. And so I think that that's a a positive. We also, again, kind of going back to what you have on your desk here that's coming from Becky Gray. There's some discussion about emergency stabilization and really what the short-term ideas are right now. And I think this could tie to what we started talking about as a local declaration of emergency related to housing that would allow us to relax some of our codes or policies. And one example of that, and you'll see that on the third page here, is is camping. And I think that even looks different from within the county because you you'll see that the kind of the discussion that's that's happening right now around camping is is finding an area where multiple campers could could locate versus camping, having a camp, some camping on individual businesses, prop properties or even residential properties. And we are starting to have interaction within our community with some business owners who have some of their employees camping or 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 camping in a trailer or R V on the business property. And so Grant is working with them, going through the correct channels of getting that permitted, but that's limited to twenty-one days per quarter. So it's not a solution that's going to really get them through the the summer season. So but it's also something we could look at if if we wanted to, if if we were starting to see the numbers increase within town of employees living in trailers or RVs or camping, not by choice, because some people are doing that, right? Then we could start looking at maybe utilizing other spaces in town such as our rodeo grounds. But I think as a at a staff level, we've we've been thinking like there's probably some easy ways to extend our permitting process for camping on private property for people that are documented, employees working a certain amount in in the area. But again, like all of that has like little nuances to it. So it's it's a tough one, but it is being discussed at this level. This open door, open doors policy is something that you might start hearing about. Salida is making a big push with this one. And I do think at the high level, it's a great idea because it's based on reaching out, communicating with people that own either short-term rentals or second homes that are vacant a lot, a lot for a period of time and just saying, hey, we are seeing this need in our community. Would you be interested in helping out, providing your space for for a longer period of time? And Salida is does seem to be pushing beyond just the ask and actually starting to think about how to financially support that model by providing bonus payments to the property owners for providing their unit as a long-term rental. And the costs of that start to grow and grow and grow. And you start setting a precedent, I think, because there's no out to this. These these are a lot of this is a long-term fight.
Kind of the thing I got out of that meeting was they were going to use the emergency funding.
Yes.
Start it, which is fine. What do you do next year?
Yep.
And the year after, and the year after, because the initial concept, when I just threw some numbers at it, is fifty thousand a year. Well, we're talking about how much for a police station. You know, and I'm, you know, I don't want to be that way, but there's no long-term discussion. It's only right now, today, short-term. And and I think leading into that, I would hope Grant would bring something forward or staff would. Okay, guys, here's what I'm seeing. We need to react. And and that's what I expect for camping or whatever we need to do when we see it start to happen. That program I think they're presenting has merit, but it's a hog. And I'll tell you what, it's people hungry, because they have an intern that's going to be running it, basically. And they're only gonna, right now, they're talking ten homes.
To start with, yes, that's.
They're doing background checks. They're doing, I mean, you know, I mean, it's a big thing, but it's not going to be simple and cheap. And and I'm not saying you don't go that way. It's just we really have to watch because it gets expensive quick.
I think what's making sense it for for our staff at this point is is just as you said, there there's there might be an opportunity to look at the camping as an option. The great thing that's happening in parallel right now is is Joseph Typle through the Community Foundation is heading up the surveys that are floating around to employers about impacts of housing and childcare limitations. And that is is some data that will help inform. He's also having sit-down meetings with several of the local employers to get actual information to to know, like, how many of your employees are you losing? Or how many of them are camping or being displaced? That will help inform us on some of these things that we could bring forward. And so that's that's kind of what I'm looking at. So I I'm glad Salida is moving forward with something they feel like fits their situation. And we can learn a lot if they do proceed with that. But the other that I that I think costs us nothing is just communicating. We could reach out to our local short-term rental owners or second homeowners that we're aware of and just say, hey, this is going on in our community. Would you be interested in in converting to a long-term rental for a time period while we're going through this crisis or, you know, this time period? So that to me is like low-hanging fruit. Why not?
Yeah.
Why not do that?
That's no different than the camping. That's that's a simple, easy one. Doesn't cost us anything. The cost is oversight. That's going to be, and that's not going to be cheap, cheap, but that's that's the cost is oversight.
So so thank you for letting me go a little bit longer than what my administrator report was in the packet, but I I know this is a, this is a topic that it has a lot of focus right now and you all are probably hearing a lot. So.
We have camping. It brings back up the dump station. That we need a dump station and.
The the hard part about well, and that's not, I'm not going to say no.
Because I've heard of people dumping wherever they feel like.
Right. And and I don't argue that either. Part of what this conversation is, is more of a centralized camping. In other words, for let's say the rodeo grounds, where you would have to put out facilities or somebody would have to go pump station, pump them physically at their area. Because a lot of these people, they're even talking tents. They're talking all kinds of stuff, not saying that all works. Those are the conversations that are going on at these meetings. Yes, a pump station does make sense. Not going to argue that, but I believe some of the conversation about the the workers we're talking about aren't going to be picking up and going to a dump station and then going back out camping. If you see what I'm saying.
If I had an R V that was parked in my yard for somebody to.
Very possible.
I would like for them to go to a dump station.
Yeah. And that's and that's something we haven't, and that's not, we really didn't pursue that, but that's a possibility of a.
So we did, I I did reach out to Patty from the sanitation district to talk about from their perspective, are they seeing an opportunity to add a dump station either through, you know, through their board discussions or through some of the relief funding, you know, I just, I don't know what's what is available for sanitation. She she she. She, she, she said they have been looking at it, but it is definitely something. It's kind of like us putting out a trash. Dumpster somewhere. It, it gets abused unless you're managing it, unless you're looking at it and, 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 you know, monitoring it. It sounds like they've had them in the past. There was one behind the Shell Station for, for a long time. It, it got misused and they had to close it down. And, and unfortunately, we're now hearing that the, the one that's located at the visitor center down in Poncha. Is getting mistreated, misused as well. So. To her point, I think whatever we decide to do with that, whether it's town moving ahead and putting. That kind of infrastructure in place or sanitation or even a private entity. It has to be done well where it's, where it's looked over. So. Yeah, but she did. She did invite us back over to the sanitation district to have a joint meeting as we had been planning. And maybe that's something we talk about together at that point, too.
The pros and cons.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Philip, to go back to your comment about applications for new trustee. A Q and A came in asking. If applicants need to reside within BB town limits.
Yes, they do. And that's a great reminder. We will publish those requirements with the announcement.
I will note that in the Q and A. Thanks.
Thank you.
I was kind of, we were hoping Jeff would answer that one.
Jeff.
Oh, you gotta, you know, gotta earn your teeth here, Jeff. Come on. It's all good. Thank you.
I can't hit my, my unmute button fast enough.
That's right. We'll, we'll accept that. Town Treasurer. You're muted.
That's because I fell asleep. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor, trustees. My staff report is on page 136 of the packet. After the shameless plugs for the transparency website and the budget book URLs. We see the sales tax for May and the comparison between. 2020, May, the actual amount, the May 2021 budget and the May 2021. One actual, and it's like a little ladder climbing up. We have year-to-date growth of 36 and a half percent. Over 2020 and 32 and a half percent over the budget. So our year-to-date budget surplus is 416,000. That number is built into the fund balance report I showed you earlier. That's all taken into account. The sales tax remote versus local data is shown. Below with the May numbers updated into it for your reference. And. The second quarter financial status report has been moved to August 24th, regular meeting. And then I have expenditures over 2,000. And after my report, I have attached the bar graph that you all love so much. I'll take any questions.
Question for Michelle. Go ahead, Libby.
Just a question on the airport additional liability insurance premium.
Yes.
Does SARS suffer 8755? What is that about?
It has to do with additional liability that. Is that an airport exposes us to, for instance, when we had the plane crash. When was that? About a year ago? On the runway. The airport liability. Would come into effect if, if we were to be sued. Because someone lost their life or injuries or whatever.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
See Philip, that's how you do a short report.
Good job, good job. I broke my own rule tonight. You're right.
You just set yourself up for next meeting, Michelle. I'm sorry.
Got a lot of questions for.
Principal Planner, Dory.
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on page 139 of your packet. Won't talk too much about numbers, really more about the other items. Are, I do want to note, the Planning Commission last week. Started its discussion about amendments to our, our Unified Development Code or UDC for housing. We're looking to try and get some. Quick wins where we can and then looking more long-term into some changes for UDC. To try and get the ability for more housing in town. We were here till 11 o'clock Wednesday night. Talking about things like single-room occupancy use to be a new use we're proposing. And about some changes for. Multi-family housing. And we are even proposing a new zone district. For single-family housing, but on smaller lots. For those of you familiar with. Majority of town is Zoned R1, which is a single-family zoning, but the minimum lot size is 6,500 square feet. So we're trying to come up with another alternative that might allow for. Smaller lot sizes, try and capitalize on our limited land area. So the Planning Commission gave direction to staff. And we'll be going back to them in October. So do invite the public to come, listen and share it in that. Kind of give you guys an example. We have about 10% of our housing stock is multifamily. So pretty limited in our multifamily options. So we're trying to. Figure out ways that we can get more multifamily town. Additionally, the Planning Commission has a couple of members that will be going to the APA Planning Conference in September with staff, so. On September 8th through the 10th, we'll be in Breckenridge at the state conference, trying to learn all we can. About various planning topics that will be presented at that conference. Historic preservation, we have a meeting in here two nights from tonight. To present our historic survey results. This is a survey we started back before the pandemic. And the pandemic kind of slowed us down a little bit because the county courthouse was closed. So our consultants couldn't actually physically get in to do some of the assessor's records research. They've completed all that and they'll be presenting that here in this conference room. Thursday night at 5:30, the public is welcome to attend. We did a survey of about 30 properties. And I think we have some interesting results that I think the public would be interested. So you're more than welcome to participate. Either here or via Zoom. That information is on the website. Lastly, we have had a couple of new site plans submitted for East Main Street, south of. The Chaffey County. Old Chaffey County Courthouse and the Avery Parsons. So on the south side of Main Street. We have a couple of applications, ones on Lot 6, which is called the Hemingway. And one is on Lot 8, which is called the Blomfeld. These are individual lots that are proposed to be similar in nature to what South Court Social did. South Court Social took up three lots, so another three lots east. We have a project and then another two lots east of that. We have another project proposed. So letting you know, we'll take those forward to the Planning Commission. For review if they need it. But they are site plans that we are planning on handling administratively if they meet the requirements. Other than that, we, we're working on a. Site plan, that major site plan that was submitted for the farm for 77 apartments. And we're working to try and get that going up and running so that. When the factory opens, the, their intent is to try and have that apartment building be the first. Front project that comes out of the factory.
Where's it gonna be located?
It's gonna be directly east of where the current farm is, so it's, it's an extension of that. And it will. The majority of, of the project is a continuation of their road system. The apartments will be just east of Antero Circle. When it goes, starts to go north out of the industrial portion down there. So they're, they're proposing three different buildings, one at 40, one at 32. And then one five-unit building that looks similar to their five-unit town. With that, I will say we've been. Pretty busy. We've gotten a lot of inquiries. People looking to subdivide their property is probably. The most interesting, plus we're getting multiple inquiries about a lot of properties. In fact, we had an interesting development this week. The property that was. Rated back in 2017 for methamphetamine is now come on the market. And so we're gonna have to keep an eye on that because that house has never been cleaned up from that meth contamination. As far as we can tell, so. We'll probably get dozens of phone calls from interested buyers by the time that's all said and done. With that, I'll just say we're, we're doing the best we can and. We're getting a lot of inquiries because a lot of people are interested in moving to BB. Any questions?
Questions for Mark?
Um, the town of properties discussion is that in regards. Parcels by collegiate commons.
That is part of that, that conversation we've been having with the Chaffey County Community Foundation. About what I commonly call right field of the old baseball field.
Andy Lyons, Graham. Yeah, I, I was gonna talk about during trustee staff, but it's kind of related, but those properties are, are super interesting. And could really alleviate a little housing thing, but we also have a lot of other property in town. Duff, you mentioned once behind Public Works.
That we have. Basically to the, what I call to the west of Public Works.
Yeah.
That, north of the rodeo grounds. You know, a big area, but, but yeah.
Something we can talk about another time, but you know, if we could utilize some of our other land to build. Apartments and workforce housing, that'd be super awesome.
I think a big discussion, you know, with some kind of RFP, you know what I'm saying? Where, yeah, we can, we can find some land if you can make us a proposal to put up some. Affordable housing.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's definitely a discussion that, that can come about. That's very, I mean.
I, I would anticipate that we would definitely do some planning that involves the public because.
Sure. Oh, definitely.
Forty acres of raw land, so much so it does not have water and it does not have sewer. So I would anticipate us probably doing a planning effort to say, what does this town want to go there? So I, it, it's not necessarily an immediate thing, but that's okay because there's not water and sewer immediately.
But it's, it's something that we should keep remembering and bringing up. We think about.
Plenty of track on our town properties. Things that we are talking about in the long term. What do we want to do? Cause there are other ample properties as well.
Right. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Devin.
Yes. You made the right field analogy and I'm, I'm not a baseball guy. It's right field from the batter's perspective or the.
From the batter's perspective. The right-hand side. You know, for those of you people from ball of sock.
I've never understood that.
That field's full, man. That field's full.
First base side.
Thank you. First baseline. Okay.
And thank you, Mark. Public Works. Sean, are you still with us?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Am I coming through okay?
Yep.
Great, great. Well, we found the leak. So yeah, I, I'm guessing you guys can recall last month, we had a. Thirty-plus percent unaccounted leak and we can talk a little bit about that. We found, we found a leak at the, the high school and it was existing two-inch service that feeds the. Gymnasium water meter location and it was modified for their stormwater plant. Design that had to get cut and modified and, and yeah, just it failed right there. And that was it. And it's amazing how much water can come out of a hole the size of a dime. Size of a, size of a penny and so stressful, pretty stressful time early to mid-June. I think we talked last month a little bit, but really glad that we found it, you know, and combined with. You know, good stewardship, good practices and obviously the cooler weather and the weather pattern changes. We've been managing our water really well and, you know, as far as I can tell, we'll have a better idea. Once we look at the end of the month metered. And master meter numbers, but you know, we're, we're, we're in a range right now that appears to have. A pretty tight, pretty tight system right now, so. I'm glad that's over, but we'll continue to keep looking for. Leaks as the year keeps going on. When we get a little bit more time to do it, we'll. Pursue our leak detection efforts with our leak detecting equipment and our staff. Maybe even consult, see how we're doing, but definitely probably put something in the budget next year to maybe outsource some of that leak detection. Efforts. We'll see how it goes. Kindred Creek stream flows definitely have benefited from the summer rainfall, so. Looks like, a lot like last year, except for a lot more rain that's coming in for, for the last, you know, month and a half. And, or, or longer. So that's, that's been great to see that and, you know, we, we get notifications from. The Deputy Water Commissioner via text daily to keep us. Up to speed on, on the stream calls that exist and those happen daily. So that's something that we'll continue to, to monitor and work with the, the division on. Same old engineering projects, a little bit more information for you guys on the future paved streets and the stormwaters design. So I, I included the street names there. So it's Pinion Building, East Arkansas, Pine and Gold. And, and those are, those are areas where, you know, some of the development has kind of driven some of the efforts to kind of evaluate. You know, street elevations, which in turn. Create stormwater passing and good drainage and good, good, you know, B and Ps for that. And yeah, pretty excited to see our stormwater fund budget growing, so. Definitely, we're working with our engineers. Our G associates to, to start developing. Those stormwater plants. We're currently working on the engineering right now, getting elevations, getting surveys done and. And looking at ways to optimize our existing infrastructure. Main Street, detention ponds and, and get the water where it needs to go and. Yeah, it's, it's, it's time to get that squared away, at least in. Areas that, that needed and primarily that's the quadrant between Main Street. East and south, so kind of just kind of over there, east part of town roughly. The street project on North Pleasant Avenue went, went very well. Very happy with, with the product that we, that we got there. We, we went a little bit above and beyond. We, we milled and removed the asphalt at the intersection and we repaved. And then we did the two-inch overlay on top of that. We were able to get some drainage improvements. It's a tough area over there, but we were able to kind of move. Move the elevations down towards the intersection at Brookdale and Pleasant, which was. An improvement from the saddle that we kind of had halfway to the bridge on Pleasant Avenue. So we're able to get it down there and. Likely come up with some more stormwater efforts there, whether it's a dry well or, or something subsurface. Like an infiltrator gallery, but it was good that we're able to do that. Really appreciate those efforts. Um, really appreciate those efforts, um, on our consultant's part and our and on our staff's part. We're, um, planning on on working on Court Street as soon as as soon as it's ready. I don't know if you tried to drive down East Arkansas Street, but right now we've got that place pretty well tore up. Payment, payment installed tomorrow. Um, what was that? Sorry.
Yeah, you can follow it, fall off the edge there.
Yeah, yeah.
Arkansas. It's all right. It's it's an adventure.
Some pretty big patches there. Um, yeah, we, um, we'll try to get that opened back up and and cleaned up tomorrow, and we should be able to get people driving on it. Probably Thursday. Um, a few of the other projects that we got going on with the streets, chip seal projects are scheduled for early August. We actually have a date. August ninth is the plan. We'll bring them in and start working on those projects. It doesn't look like it, but when we have time, we are trying to get some of our mowing done in our right of ways, pat, pothole and patching. Um, as as time allows and availability of asphalt. We got a couple sidewalk replacement projects wrapped up on, um, Brady and on Marquette. We have a couple more to do still this year. Obviously, the C dot sidewalk project um, got pushed back to, uh, September, and if we have enough time and enough money, we want to go ahead and move forward. The collegiate banks sidewalk replacement also this year. Uh, painting and striping always kind of ongoing. We have a few few small things that always pop up that we're always trying to get done. So we did a little bit of striping this week as well. Minor sign installations, um, and with all the heavy rains, yeah, it's really implemented. Um, you know, s- stormwater inspections. We try to do that quarterly, but every time that it rains, it, you know, we we have so much activity and, um, you know, it's 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 really easy for some of the sediment to get into our our stormwater collection systems and and follow them up. So we're we're really keeping an eye on that. Uh, picture of a little sidewalk on Marquette there for you. Um, staff, um, park staff, uh, you know, they're they're, I don't know how, um, they're doing it sometimes, but they're 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 keeping up pretty well. Um, appreciate the foresight and the budget for, uh, allowing us to uh, subcontract some of the maintenance. It's been really beneficial this year. Um, trash and restroom cleanup and turf maintenance, you know, it's it's a lot to do. There's always a lot of a lot that comes um, comes with that too. So, uh, scheduled events like irrigation repairs and and minor acts of vandalism, all in all, we're having a pretty good summer in regards to that. Um, cemetery maintenance, uh, right now, I just, um, like to thank the volunteer groups that are helping out up there. We'll have a follow up next month and get you guys, um, pretty good report on on how that's going. There's been, uh, pretty strong efforts. From the community as well as from our staff. Um, appreciate the guys cleaning up the gateway signs, um, and, um, we installed new GFI outlets on Front Loop. A few of them are back ordered, but there's a picture of one of the ones that we installed. I don't know if anybody ever looked at those, but they were pretty well dilapidated.
I think it's cool how you put them in the tree. That's just really neat.
It just looks like that. Yeah, um, yeah, big thanks to Jay for making time to help out, uh, all of our departments. He, uh, he's been around for so long. He's a high value and, you know, with the busy summer and and just has been, you know, the the things that he knows, the institutional knowledge, he he, you know, he's he's just a really valuable employee, employee. Um, he's primarily our our fleet maintenance shop foreman. Um, but, um, yeah, he's he's helped out our water department, helped out our street department, Public Works Director and and yeah, and helped out, uh, street department. Um, just, just, just really appreciate having him around. Um, development progress, you know, there's a, there's some more that are happening, but these are kind of the big things that are going on right now. Um, phase two at the farm installing water sewer and curb and gutter. Uh, Sunset Vista, they actually completed installing water and sewers, so they'll be working on uh, prepping for, um, paving and and curb and gutter. Uh, Court Street Social Building is pretty much locked in on onsite construction. Uh, just wait till they have to connect to the water main. It's gonna be a a big mess down there. We're gonna have to run a main um, down South Court Street, and we're hoping to do that once the summer season starts to slow down. Um, Court Street Social, um, is is pretty impressive, pretty impressive site. Um, crumb development that's happening down there in one of the areas that are kind of driving some more stormwater and, uh, elevations for our street, uh, design. It's, um, Gold Street and Pine Street? Yeah, I think so. And fading west is plugging away. We have, uh, some public improvements, challenges happening there. And, uh, yeah, a couple pictures of Legacy Bank. Really happy with that, with that, uh, project. Um, the sidewalks, the curb and gutter, um, all in all, the attention to detail that they're spending there. Um, it's it's really, really, I'm just wanted to share with you, um, they're they're doing a pretty great job. Um, it's a pretty challenging project, pretty flat, elevations and grades and getting that water to go where it needs to go. It's not that easy to do, especially when things are so flat, but, um, the craftsmanship, uh, really like the architecture, but a couple pictures there. Anyways, um, not quite as fast as Michelle, but, um, if you have any questions.
Um, I want to say the in the gateway signs look great. Uh, I wanted to make point that really point that out. And then the other thing, Sean, I appreciate you working with the groups that are approaching the cemetery. Um, taking that on with an open mind, that's really great. Um, helping, helping them help, I guess, the best way to put it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, man.
Anything else for Sean?
Um, what's the age of the pipes that are leaking? Does that have anything to do with that or?
The the leak that we
What was that?
The the leak that we that was repaired. You know, it's 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 kind of a unique, so so, um, trust it's actually a, it's actually a service line, and it was installed and tapped into the water main on Marquette Avenue, and it was, it's a four inch, um, cast iron line that comes into a four inch isolation valve, which is kind of like the curb valve and commercial commercial building. So we're able to isolate it at the at the, um, isolation valve, and then from the the four inch, it actually reduces to a tight K, two and a half inch copper line. And when we were doing our inspections for the project during the construction, we we identified, um, and brought in, uh, our engineer at the time to kind of evaluate how to install that crossing, and it was a good design. It was a good crossing. It it was just a bad connection, you know, um. What happens to copper is if it's not perfectly smooth and the water starts traveling through it, it starts to create a ventury effect and kind of, you know, kind of similar to what the water does to the big boulders in the Arkansas. It just starts to wear on a spot and then it becomes aggressive. And as soon as one hole gets, um, kind of started, it gets even a little bit more aggressive. So that pipe was probably eight months old, so wasn't so much age of the pipe, it was just the installation. Easy mistake, um, I guess, you know, but, um, you know, kind of frustrating, you know, had to dig up the parking lot and, you know, dig a hole and 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 redo it, but, um, but the, uh, the repair went really well.
Interesting. Thank you.
Any other questions? Next, Airport Jack.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees again. Um, my report's on one forty-five. Uh, staffing wise, we have Chandra's out for the last week. She'll be in back to work Monday. She's off on vacation. Uh, a little bit of bad news for Randy. He's our line tech. His grandmother passed away and then his uncle passed away, so he's been off um, for the last week as well. Um, but this, um, kind of highlighted some of the staffing issues and plus we're starting to hit a burnout right here. So we're looking at maybe hiring another part time. Uh, doesn't mean that we're gonna have, uh, extra hours. We're just gonna spread the workload out amongst the staff that is here. Uh, try and even it out, uh, some of the, I know dad working long hours over the weekends and Monday, so we're just trying to spread the week out through more people instead of less people and more hours. Event wise, we're still tracking for a hats barbecue on twelve August and then, uh, a fly-in is we're a go for the fly-in on twenty-one of August. Um, we have a tent that we've ordered so we can put people to sit. And that was kind of our last thing, if we could get that, uh, the reason we had to do that. If you look down an operation, it looks like a gusta. We'll be coming back this summer with two helicopters. Uh, the dates are pushing around, but we're looking at maybe six August seventeen, October, they'll be here with two helicopters. We'll we'll see when they do show up. I'm confident they will show up, not to, not, I'm not too sure about these dates yet. But they'll be, uh, it'd be quite an entourage because it, they're at that point where the aircraft is being signed over to the US. So we're gonna have Boeing representative, US Air Force and FAA. We're gonna have quite a gang of folks out here. Grants, uh, we've just closed out. We've received two, um, actually, I guess, Michelle, we've received two gr- grants, twenty thousand dollars and a thirteen thousand dollars, which are uh, in our proverbial pockets right now. And thank you, Jeff, uh, and Philip for signing the paperwork. We just submitted another paperwork for another thirty-two thousand dollars, so we should probably have that resolved shortly as well. And business plan is was presented earlier. Equipment, we're doing pretty, pretty good. Um, and you can see, I don't know if it presented it last year, but the fence repairs, we have them in the insurance now, so we're just finalizing that, uh, that was that crash that happened in May. Those are the numbers, fourteen thousand for the temporary, another sixteen thousand or fourteen hundred for the temporary, another sixteen thousand plus for the final job. They haven't come out and did the repairs yet, but that's what the estimate is. Operation wise, we're up all across the board from last year, some, uh, pretty fantastic numbers, um, um, aircraft over twelve thousand five, we're up over two hundred and fourteen percent. Total operations up thirty-seven percent. Uh, then if you get down into fuel, even the, um, our both our fuels are up from last year. And our jet A fuels up ninety-two percent from last year, and and we haven't even gotten to the testing phase yet, so. Uh, that's where we stand, and we're looking, we're looking in good shape the throughout the for the for this summer. Uh, if you have any questions, I'll entertain.
Questions for Jack? And the only thing I did notice, um, I guess I don't recall that we actually did an official approval of the airport business plan. Do you want to motion for that to
Yeah, I guess, uh, if everybody's doing
Great. That would be great.
I would make that motion to approve the business plan presented tonight.
Thank you, Dave.
A second.
Second row for discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, Jack. That is a good plan. Make sure you pass that on. All righty. Next, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, and, uh, the remaining staff that are still awake. So I'm gonna, thanks for putting IT at the end, Philip. We're gonna, uh, put this meeting to bed. Uh, let's see. So actually, um, interesting news, um, in the coming weeks here, I'm coming up on three years with town. In some senses, it feels like I'm just getting started, and in others, it feels like I've been here forever. So, um, but what I've included in my report is, since I don't get to talk to you all that often, is just some of the major projects that we've completed the end of twenty twenty and early twenty twenty-one. I'll say this too, uh, two and a half years ago, I think I I I presented to the board and, you know, mentioned that I'm a one man band here. And I do, I, you know, that I was planning to rely heavily on vendor relationships and partnerships. And I would say that all of these projects that I've got done, I could not have completed or got all of them completed without the help of a really good partnerships that I have with our vendors. Um, so huge thanks to those guys for helping me do a job that helps everyone else get their jobs done. I'll just hit on one of the the big projects, and if you guys have any questions about the others, feel free to ask. Um, but earlier this year, we we did a, uh, major upgrade to our, um, data center infrastructure. Um, where we updated all the hardware, the servers and the storage. And along with that, we took the opportunity and kind of restructured our data model. Our server storage, our server architecture was kind of a a hodgepodge, um, that had just slowly been snowballing and getting really unruly and out of hand. For example, we would have, uh, a server that would have some domain controllers on it and maybe have a couple applications that we're running on that server, and then we would also have file shares uh, with within different departments. So we took that opportunity to isolate and restructure our our architecture where, uh, our domain controllers are on their very own server, and we have a redundant domain controller, so we have a backup domain controller. Uh, we migrated all the applications to their own server environments. And then we restructured our file share, uh, to be department based and have a little bit more security based on, um, departments. And that is all, um, isolated and and separated, and along with the improvements that we made in the hardware, uh, those architecture, um, restructuring, um, really helped with the performance of the server updates, so. Um, really pleased with the way that went, and, uh, like I said, we couldn't have done it without the help of, um, without the help of our vendors. And I will leave it at that. We've, I think we've gone long enough unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for Michael?
I will say, you're in a position when you hear nothing, you know, it goes unnoticed. But boy, when it crashes, you hear all about it, don't you?
Why, why'd you say that? Everyone, find some wood and knock on it.
We appreciate everything you do. I mean, I know you're looking out for us. It's it's just one of those positions. Man, when it flows, it's great.
Yeah, and yeah, the, um, the 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 security improvements that we made too, I, um, I don't want to get into detail, um, in a public forum. Um, but I'm really pleased with with the efforts we have there and the stuff that I have, future plans we have going forward tie into those security improvements as well. Um, so really, um, I I can actually sleep at night.
Some nights. Thanks, Michael. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Uh, trustee staff, we will start with Volpe.
Uh, thanks. I have one quick comment and then one confession. Comment is, you know, we're, we seem to be shifting our focus towards density. And obviously, that's gonna affect water, and I know that we all have that on our mind, but I just wanna just express my concern that, um, as we focus on one, we're rapidly accelerating the other problem. That's that. And then the other, uh, confession is, over the weekend, n- normally, social media is kind of an entertainment. Uh, I I'm entertained by the the rants and the reviews and the going on, but I I got I got emotional over one that we had a couple of business owners that were not so kind to the trustees and, uh, the commissioners, and I kind of got riled up and fired off a uh, a communication with the chamber, um, asking for their help, um, in in relaying and and just being a link between an obvious disconnect between conversations that I'm very proud of, what we've done for short term rentals and where we're going with it, and the frustration that our community is feeling. So I I I I'm not sure if I overstepped my bounds as a trustee. Um, I'm not a member of the chamber. I did not asked for assistance, um, if they would consider stepping up and not, you know, having a, uh, stepping up and not, you know, having a, uh, posting a, a forum that could possibly relate what we're talking about with what they're perceiving and, and maybe filling in that gap. So I'm, I, I don't permission for just to notify you that I did that. I, I'm not sure whether the boundary is drawn between my right as a frustrated citizen and as a trustee. That's that.
I didn't hear anything, but you put your hand right here. We'll take care of it. We'll fix it. Which finger do you use?
I'll show you which finger.
We won't go there either. Um, if that's all you got, man, that's nothing. That's, that's all good. Um, I heard a little bit about that. It's, I think it's venting is really what it is.
It is. It's just, it just, it got me.
Uh, well, and then not necessarily you on the other side. Just saying, they were just venting. Uh, and you know, they want to hear, hear themselves. Libby?
I don't have anything, but I just generally try to stay off of social media.
Thank you. Paula?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? Nothing, you know, marijuana, alcohol?
We got, you know, have some stores open up to get the marijuana.
Oh, there you go.
We do have an election coming up April fifth, twenty twenty two. It will be for board of trustee members and a mayor. So we do have that out on our radar. So.
Already?
Already. Dave's Trimmerman.
Too soon.
Norm are up to, right? No, not norm. Cinemas.
The whoever we appoint. Yes. You appoint, excuse me. Uh, we'll be up for reelection.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
I don't have anything.
Nothing to enlighten us with. Jeff? I'll get you in early.
I've been quiet all night, which is just how you want your attorney. I don't have anything to discuss in public, so I think I'm good. Thanks.
Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely.
Cindy?
Um, couple of things. Um, attending the tree board meeting in the UDC code where they have two trees in a yard and they're supposed to maintain those for two years. The they were talking and they said it takes three to five years for a tree to establish on its own where it doesn't need help. And I don't know if anybody would be interested in changing the code so they have to maintain that tree for three years to give it a chance to stay alive better or not, or if it's any, if it's even important. And then in the business license.
Help me out, Mike.
Do you need Philip?
Uh, you, hold on, sorry. Got it. Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Now, business licenses, um, three of them were out of county STRs. Are, when is the thing coming to us to vote on and how close are we to that? What percent cap?
So we're, we're, we're planning on, we've advertised to, to bring forward, uh, the discussion next meeting, August twenty fourth.
Okay.
Um, planning and zoning will hear, um, the, we'll go through the changes to the UDC and probably the overall plan as well on August eighteenth. It's not enough. We don't anticipate there's enough time to turn around from planning and zoning on the eighteenth to have everything ready for the twenty fourth. So we're advertising for the planning and zoning commission on the eighteenth. Uh, board of trustee discussion on the twenty fourth, which might include an ordinance to change chapter six, non-UDC stuff. And then again, on September fourteenth, very next meeting to follow up with hopefully where planning and zoning, uh, gives a recommendation.
So right now we're putting in the ad for the twenty fourth on Friday and that should show up in Thursday's paper. For the amendments under chapter six, but not in chapter sixteen.
And, and, uh, keep in mind that whatever number is reached this year, you know, if the board says, hey, let's let's cap this category of four term rentals at this number.
At four percent. Well, next four percent could be different.
Yeah, but also no one from this year is, uh, assured to license next.
Guaranteed.
So, um, so even if two thousand people got SDRs right now, but it wouldn't be allowed next year, assuming that that code is passed.
Okay.
Now I'm going to go back to your original. How would that information funnel to planning and zoning to change that code about the trees?
I, I would ask for the, the tree board to make recommendations through their, through their process. And I, did they do that?
And it was just a discussion. And how hard would it be enforce it? I mean, someone would have to keep track of, is that tree three years old or is it five years old?
And it's that way with two years. I'll just say that. It's that way with two years. So what's the difference? One more year. I'll just, I'll just say.
Yeah.
If I may, our intent is if someone is planting trees on their own property, that those trees remain on their property, that they maintain them in good working order in perpetuity.
Okay.
It's just young trees need more work than old trees.
So I don't know if that's, I'd like to say that's food for.
I think it's a great discussion. Uh, I can, so, uh, I don't think changing the hard at all, if that's a, if that's a formal recommendation.
And tell them that's what they would do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And planning would be happy to have that conversation.
Yeah, I think that'd be simple.
Simple. Thank you, Cindy. Uh, Devon?
I'm groovy.
Good. Norm?
Yeah, with the increased amount of moisture we've had, there's a few yards in town are getting out of control.
So there's communication effort going out on that. Uh, we, we had to get after our own properties as well before we started going after private property too. Has been chasing that. Uh, so our newsletter that's coming out with the water billing has a feature on responsibility for maintaining, uh, grass and weeds at the, at the height on the property, also in the right of way. If they have right of way and, uh, adjacent to their property. And then grants going after those next.
And then the other thing, there's still one more car on Chestnut that is not legally registered. It's parked between two that are, they got registered, but it's still there's a little one there that's still outdated tags.
Okay.
I check on that.
And I will agree, some of the commercial stuff on the highways looking.
Ready?
Well, you know, when you want to look at, how does your town look? Just saying, you know, if there's weeds growing everywhere, it doesn't look good, but if you don't look in your backyard, it's pretty hard to tell somebody else straighten up there. So. Very good point. Very good point. Uh, Mark?
Thank you. I'm going to brag here for a second. It's not about me, but, uh, my niece was uh, voted grand champion of Los Anamos County four H. I believe it's in park. I just found that out during this meeting. So I'm just going to go ahead and put the rest of the state on notice. The grand champion from Los Anamos County. He's getting ready to throw down at the state fair. So, um, she was grand champion at the state fair a couple of years ago. So she's covering for it.
Thanks, Mark. Earl?
Yeah, a couple of quick notes. Speaking of weeds, we're having two community, um, service projects this weekend, one at the pump track and one at the dog park to help with weed mitigation and just overall beautification of those two facilities in town. Nine and twelve on Saturday, um, back to back. Uh, Sunset Vista, we rekindled, uh, our town connection with the community there this week. And I have a bunch of homeowners about the future park. That was really great to get to know a lot of the new community members up there. Um, and finally, happy birthday, Phil. Birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Birthday once and had tacos, but, um,
It was great.
I make sure that I don't forget about him during this long.
Thank you. Thank you, Earl. Great time at town hall today. Lots of good food. Good day.
It's not a puppy anymore.
Nope. Someone asked me how it felt to be sixty. I was like, eh, it feels like about forty two.
No, it doesn't.
That's at the moment.
Far wrong. That's all.
He's wrong.
Jack, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for the support and, uh, signing off on our business plan. Um, now that we have birthday parties, next year I want steak and lobster, if that's okay.
Thanks, Jack. Michelle?
Um, yeah. Do you want to talk about, um, direction regarding the police station funding?
Yep, I can bring that up, but you got it. So, um, initial thoughts?
I think the certificates of participation sound like a great idea. It feels a little sneaky in terms of, you know, trying to avoid a voter um, issue, uh, if you go for debt, but it sounds like it works. JF County is doing it.
A lot of schools are.
Like we should go forward on both projects.
When you looked at the list of the noted notables, we'll just put it that way. There's a lot of them out there that are doing it and it's like, okay, makes sense, legal. Otherwise it couldn't be. I guess it's legal, Jeff.
They're around long enough.
The next question, oh, I guess everybody's kind of, go ahead, Norm.
I just don't, I I've seen this in a lot of instances, like at the school, we don't want to build too small. And you gotta, you gotta look, you gotta look ahead. Uh, that's Margaret.
And, and I will say unfortunately, that's what we got. And we leased the station. Just plain one big enough. And I think I think it will be interesting, even if we build to size that we give ourselves options to add on. Yeah. So.
So when we do it the sneaky way, it doesn't raise people's taxes on their home.
It does not.
And it goes to the vote of the people, it would raise.
Well, not necessarily.
Is if the question was, Kit, do we, do the voters support going into debt, going to a bond issue? That doesn't mean we have to raise taxes to support that, but it does mean we need to have a, a revenue source somewhere to, to support that.
Right. Which generally is tied to a tax.
Right.
Like our road tax was with the bond we got.
So yeah, the twenty ten road tax increase set the stage for the twenty twelve debt question for this, for the street.
This doesn't really have a revenue side to it.
You know, this could potentially save people money to have a new.
It could be worded that way. Are you, I mean, if you're going to go this route, you may as well word it that way.
So, so it becomes a dedication in our, in our general fund and capital improvement fund to say, this becomes part of our ongoing budgeting process and it, it would take away from other things.
It's, I mean, somewhere between a quarter and a half a million dollars annually hit to the budget.
Yes. And, and, and then I will just say that, but when we did the, and we, we did the, the marijuana. That was part of the question is that that's how that money would be used or could be used. I guess I'll put it that way. Would not would, but could. So that's an unknown. So it's going to, it, it is what you're saying. It is going to be a hit to the general. But we do have a revenue stream that we have not experienced yet. It's the best way I can put it. We don't know how much is going to come from marijuana and will that help or not help? I don't know.
Well, and two, if you're looking at a major safety factor too. Responding from down here in this area with the amount of people that are in town can be a real problem out there.
They can scoot, they can scoot rodeo, Greg, they can fly.
Down here, it's almost sometimes like you're landlocked.
And I know they were using cedar only because it was easier, but cedar is no better.
No, cedar is no better. Busy, busy too.
Um, Devon, do you have any input on this at this point?
No, I think it sounds good. It seems like a lot of money. So, yeah.
You know, and, and I don't think anybody's arguing that. It is a big bill. But it's a big bill that's going to be here whether we, this route or a different route.
Yeah.
Uh, the other side of that question that, that I want to impose is do you look at more for town hall? And that can come down the road. But then also putting, let's say, putting public works up for collateral to allow this process to move forward simpler and easier.
I don't think, yeah, go ahead.
So the, did you contact the library?
Yes. And they're still discussing with their board about the fire station.
Yes.
Um, they did a tour of the station. Uh, I think the way I would characterize it is they've talked about the need for more space. They've, they've been in contact with town for a number of years. But they never did the planning for what that, how they would actually take that next step. So now that it's an option, they're, they're kind of in that situation where yes, we need more space, but is this the right space? Um, so they're continuing that discussion in their board meetings through July into August. And then what I've told them is, um, you know, town is interested in partnering with them if they, if they do want to purchase. But that we would look to possibly go to putting it on the market, uh, later this fall, September, October. So just be in contact with us if you all do want to secure it. And, and I think they are looking at it as hey, maybe this is the opportunity to acquire this property. Uh, maybe they do that now and hold it while they finish their planning. And then if it turns out that they don't want to use it for library, maybe they resell it or lease it out. So that was a discussion they, they, you know, kind of posed to me. Would town be offended? If they did purchase it now, held it, but then didn't end up using it for library purposes. And my response to them is we're looking for market value right now so that we can move forward with our priorities. So I don't think that we would be upset or offended if they secured it now, but then ended up not using it. So hope I didn't overstep there, but that.
I don't believe so. I, I think actually, I think if the land was scraped or half of it, they would jump on it because they would use it for parking or something, 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 something. With the way it is, they're going, gosh, what are we going to do with that? I think that's really the question. They, if, if it was me looking at it, that's what I would say. So you were going to say something else?
Um, I guess where, uh, Michelle had mentioned the concept of rolling in enough of the COP to cover the town hall portion as well. We still, we're just, we're getting into the budget cycle. And so to address the, the question of how does this fit into our ongoing general fund? That's what I need to see is how does our twenty twenty two budget look with something like two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars taken out of it for a COP? Uh, before I'm ready to say, hey, let's up that to half a million to roll in town.
Um, so, uh, I guess we're agreed. This is the direction to pursue. Is with cycle. Um, do we put out an RFP with a question mark? Both?
See, that's the question is do we want to go ahead and start an RFP process to find the architecture firm that we want? That will work out all the details for the police station. And, and again, that's not committing to spending any dollars. It's doing an RFP to get those in. And then we bring it back to the board to say, okay, it's going to cost, you know, we were anticipating two hundred and thirty thousand for that effort. Yeah. It could be that, could be a little less. We don't really know yet, but.
And, and all, you know, it's, uh, is it wrong to ask for the whole project and only pursue half? I mean, you know what I'm saying? Hey, you know, the RFP is this. Give us a total picture, but we're only going to go this way.
They're going to have to break it down.
Yeah, we don't have to do the whole thing.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Okay.
So is that?
Yes.
Good enough. Do you need a motion or?
Motion please. Motion please would be great. Motion please. Motion please would be great.
Motion would be good.
Move that we proceed with the request for an RFP.
You got a second? Is that clear, Philip?
Yes.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, let me see, who brought that up?
Michelle. I did.
Michelle, thank you, Michelle. Now I know where I'm at on my list. Sean. Anything else?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um. One, yeah, really excited for budget. So, yeah.
Liar.
Really? Um, I guess the main thing I, I really, I really appreciate. And I'm, your interest in water and I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, the water plant tour. So. Thank you guys for, for, for thinking about that. And, and, uh, it's, uh, you got a lot on your plate, but I, I really appreciate you guys making time and. Putting that on your radar. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, Michael, do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
We appreciate your, uh, attending meetings. Okay, so we have a reminder on the CML Rockdale. Hats, eight, 12. September 9th, 5:30. What was August 31st?
That's the intergovernmental.
There you go. I knew it was down there for a reason. Didn't know why. IGA. And that's supposed to be in Slida, correct?
Yes.
Uh, Paula will be sending us out. Reminder on that one for an RSVP. Philip, anything?
Thanks for the, the support on the Montessori proposal. I think that is a great partnership potential there. Um. Just clear, make sure I'm clear on the direction of that. Um, what, does the board want to see the drafted lease agreement for approval before we proceed? Would you like to see that? Or do you feel good with, or rad? And 500 a month was kind of where we were landing on their lease payment.
And you know, you're looking for something inclusive. You've got that. For each side of it. That's all cool. Uh, I'm good. Everybody. Yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, I kind of, I had an issue with that originally, and then I got to thinking of what we were doing with Chamber. And I'm going, really? I'm concerned about what? You know, it's gonna be really good use. Um, her presentation was very heartfelt. If nothing else, that's just the way I felt that. I'm going, wow. I wish I had. No, I don't. Wish I had kids this big to send to school. No, I don't.
They're such a need.
Oh, it is. I, I wish it was bigger so they wouldn't move. I, I really do. Cause you know they can't stay there.
Fire station.
You know, we don't want to kill them. I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
That's all I have.
That's all you have. I do not have anything. I think I touched on everything I've entered in motion. Got a motion?
Second.
Second Volpe? All in favor? Thank you all very much. It was a very good night.
It was a good night.
Very good night. Lot of.
Everyone. Good night. Six meetings off. No, I'm flying in.
I, I don't care what you do.
I get in at 30 in the morning.
No, and if you never.